Good evening, everyone. It's good to see such a good, warm crowd out here, ready to do some business. I'm gonna go ahead and let y'all know, I've left, I've been up since 6:00 AM. I've been in trial today, and I was left straight from Chester and came straight here. So my brain may not be working so well, you have to bear with me if I have to read something twice, but I didn't want to explain it before I end up making some boo-boos. But we appreciate you being here tonight. Our first order of business is for me to recognize the Honorable Debbie Cloninger from District Seven for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather today in this meeting, we look to you for guidance and inspiration. I pray that you give us wisdom and help us acknowledge that without you, our efforts are in vain. Father, you are the giver of all good things, and I pray your will will be accomplished in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Praise the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have oath of office for several members who have agreed to serve voluntarily on our boards and commissions. When I call your names, if you'll please come forward and stand in front of the podium, and our attorney will meet you at the front to swear you in. We have Paul Wise and Harold Barfield, Paul Wise with Bethesda Fire Tax District Board, Harold Barfield with Riverview Fire Tax District Board, Justin LaRoche with Riverview Fire Tax District Board, Marty Cotton with York County Forever District Two, Robert Carter, York County Forever District Four, and Ron Parks with York County Forever District Six. If y'all will come forward, on behalf of the council, we do want to say thank you so much for your willingness to serve. You do so without pay, and you oftentimes do it without any thanks at all, but we do appreciate it, and our community is better off by having folks who are involved in this process. We do have a couple of appearances tonight. The first is to recognize the York County 101 Citizens Academy graduates, and I don't want to steal the thunder from Greg about this program, so I will let him do all the talking and recognize all of our folks.
Thanks, appreciate that. Evening, council. Yeah, I'm really honored to be the one to get to stand up here tonight, talk a little bit about York County 101 Citizens Academy. It is such a fantastic program that this county offers just to let citizens really see in detail what we do every day, to hear it from the people who do those jobs all the time. And it's been a program that's been around for about, I think this is the 11th year, and we're just really glad tonight to be able to recognize the graduates that are here from this year's program. There were 27 people that went through it, and 20 of them are here tonight, so we're really glad about that. And just for, you know, a little bit more background for those here in the room that may not be aware of the program, and for those watching, is that this is a nine-month program, starts in February, ends in October, meets once a month, and it goes really in-depth on county government. They get to hear presentations from 27 different departments of county government, and not only get really down in detail as to what each of these jobs entail and what we do, what staff does, but ask questions and get a lot of their questions answered as well. And I took this my first year here as an employee and was frankly blown away at how little I knew about county government until I took this class. I was glad to take it as an employee, but it's just a great opportunity, and we're gonna offer it again next year, and we'll hopefully be putting out some advertisements about that late December, early January for next year's class, and we'll have information on our website about signing up for that. But I want to go ahead and just, without further ado, acknowledge this year's graduates, and I'll call y'all's name alphabetically. You'll come up, meet the county manager, get your certificate, and then we'll have you stand up here for a minute to take a quick photo, and you can be on your way. So see if I can get through this without my glasses on. I'm gonna try. All right. Lisa Adu. Lynette Bell. Donald Cloniger. I know some people were a little late because there was, I think, an accident on 161 that held some people up. Marlene Crowell. David Dobrowski. Stacy Fallow. Carolyn Guyer. Robert Harwell. This one's my brother-in-law, so I'm glad he had the opportunity to go through the class. Rosemary Janeski. Kristy Kemp. Danica Lomeyer. And Skip Lomeyer. Asia Martin. Helena McCree. Katie Rutland. Jacob Saylor. Scott Webb. Gary Weiss. And Monica White. Monica White. And Forrest Worstall. Congrats to all, and thank you very much.
Can we stand up? County Councilwoman.
We got a lot of graduates here going through these a little bit.
Okay, I need this side to squeeze a little bit. Perfect, okay. All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Congratulations, y'all. Great job. Great job.
We definitely do appreciate those folks coming out, learning more about their local government, and encourage folks in the gallery to consider doing that, too. There's a lot of information, a lot of things that folks don't recognize. We'll give folks a few minutes to move out and give a couple of minutes to let folks move in. We do have one other appearance tonight. Charles Gunning with Craig Galden-Davis to recognize Ebenezer Park.
Thank you, I appreciate you allowing me to be here. I wanted to take a moment to recognize an accomplishment that a lot of people have worked hard on, and that is Ebenezer Park. So every two years, the Greenville Chapter of the American Institute of Architects assembles a jury of peers across our region, and the purpose of this is to recognize projects that exhibit just the highest level of design excellence and rigor. This year, we were honored to have Ebenezer Park be selected as one of those projects, and it was awarded a merit award. I'll just be brief. I know we have a long meeting here, but I did want to share a couple of quotes from these jurors, because I think it's just inspiring, and I think it really goes to, it's a great testament to what a wonderful place this is. So the jury commended the project for its overall strong site plan, its thoughtful composition. In totality, this is a quote from the jury itself. "In totality, the project reflects a commendable level of design consideration and contributes meaningfully to its community and its clarity in planning, and it is such a successful integration of program and gives a sense of place." So on behalf of the entire design team, we wanted to present this award of merit to the council in recognition of the vision and all the efforts and leadership it takes to put something like this together. So it's appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right. Before we move into our consent agenda, we do have a public forum session. Now, public forum session, one of the most important things we do as a council is to make sure that we take the time and that we allow our community to address us and to speak to us, and that we listen. That, we allow to happen every council meeting before we get into our business, which we do have a good bit of business to do tonight. A couple of ground rules, and the way that we approach this is, when you come and speak, I ask that you give your name, give your address, and if you'll pay attention to the screen, it will show you, at least it should, hopefully, it'll work tonight. When your two minutes is up, and if you would kindly cut off your comments then, then I don't have to do it for you. We do allow the first 15 individuals who have signed up to come speak. If, we do have three or four public hearings tonight. So if you're here tonight on a public hearing matter, and I noticed that a number of folks had signed up to speak about the impact fee, that is a public hearing item, so I'm gonna ask that you wait and reserve your comments until the public hearing item comes up. That way, your comments will be connected to the item in the record that you're here to speak about. We do ask that, every time we have a large crowd, and want to reiterate, we want folks to feel comfortable, everyone, even if they share a different opinion than the majority of the people in the room, we want everyone to feel comfortable to come into these four walls and feel like they are respected, and that we're gonna treat everyone civilly. And so what I would ask is that if you're here to speak on a matter, we're not gonna, we're gonna refrain from applause. We're gonna ask you to be quiet when the speaker is speaking, so that I don't have to call people down who are talking when the individual is speaking. We're gonna also ask that you refrain from boos, and any kind of, let one person come up and speak, and let them complete what they're gonna say, and if that person wishes to recognize anyone in the room or a group that they're here with to say, "Look, there are other folks that feel the same way," they certainly could do that. That's a little bit more, better way to show the support for that. I think I covered everything on the public hearing stuff, so we'll go ahead and get started. Frank Jernak.
Good evening, council members. My name is Frank Jernak, I live in Fort Mill. I'm here tonight as a resident, parent, and retired engineer, asking you to take accountability for the decisions being made about the SILFAB facility here in Fort Mill. Under the South Carolina Fire Code, the site qualifies as a high-hazard H3 and H4 heavy industrial facility, yet it sits beside homes, schools, in areas zoned for light industrial use. Earlier this year, a whistleblower lawsuit was filed in York County alleging that SILFAB operated without an occupancy permit, that the fire marshal shut it down, and that the employee who reported it was fired. That means this council is now officially on notice that serious safety violations have already occurred. From this point forward, inaction is not neutral. Once you are aware of a public hazard, the law holds you to a duty of care. If a chemical release or explosion occurs and people are harmed, investigations and attorneys will ask you, "Who knew? And who failed to act?" Each of you could be held personally responsible for negligence and breach of duty. You were elected to protect the public, not corporations. Your choice is clear. Halt all approvals, permits, and incentives for SILFAB while the lawsuits and investigations work their way through the court system, or you can ignore the warning to carry the liability yourselves. The record will show what you knew and when you knew it. The only question is, what are you going to do about that knowledge? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again.
Lana Vivant.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lana Vivant, 148 Charter House Lane, Fort Mill. SILFAB issue. For two years, citizens have watched with growing disbelief unfolding of the SILFAB solar project. We have read the documents, followed the hearings, listened to every statement made by this county, and tonight I'm here to ask, when did York County decide that the law no longer applies to everyone? We now know that the so-called development rights claimed by SILFAB Solar were based on nothing more than a zoning verification letter written in December 2022. That letter did not mention SILFAB. It did not grant development rights. By this county's own definition, such letters cannot grant any right to build. They simply confirm a zoning classification. Yet somehow, that letter is used to justify construction of a high-hazard industrial facility beside neighborhoods and schools. Even more troubling, this county ignored the decision of its Board of Zoning Appeals dated May 9, 2024, and issued new permits to SILFAB the very next month. SILFAB immediately began building and continues to build today. And now they claim to be aggrieved while operating freely under your approval. Let's check South Carolina law. In Sherman v. Reeves, the State Supreme Court ruled that there can be no vested rights if invalid permit. A permit issued in violation of zoning law is void. Construction under such a permit can be stopped. So why hasn't York County stopped it? Why do citizens, the only truly aggrieved party here, have to beg their own government to follow the law? You took an oath to protect this county and its people, not the interests of corporations. And we ask you to follow the law, protect the people, and stand with your people.
Thank you, ma'am. Caleb Standifer, you've signed up for impact fees, so I would ask that you wait for the public hearing. Jeff Blair.
Good evening, Jeff Blair, 299 South Side Road, Rock Hill. Wanted to speak to you for a minute regarding Project Sample. Project Sample regards a company that is a very, very profitable company. 2023, profit increased 8%. 2024, increased another 8%. And in 2025, profit has gone up over 10% to over $35.3 billion. So speaking of increases, my property taxes just went up about 12%. I'm gonna pay it, not a portion of it, I'm gonna pay it all, because it's the price we pay for living in a desirable location. Project Sample wants to come here because this is a desirable location for them, and they should pay their full portion, too, just like every other citizen in New York County has to do. So the less they pay, the more everyone else, including the school system, has to make up the difference. So why should we incentivize the loss of a prime industrial location for a lower tax revenue, for very few, very low-paying jobs, and dramatically increase truck traffic? It's just a terrible deal for York County. If you consider yourself a good steward of the taxpayers' money, I would ask that you oppose the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do have Pam Cato, Perry Johnston, and Sherri Curick for the impact fee, so I would ask that those individuals, please make sure that you speak at the, and as well as, it looks like Eric Burkhardt, if y'all would please speak at the public hearing item. Doug Morris.
Good evening, Doug Morris, at 4575 Highway 5, Rock Hill. Calling with concerns to you tonight. You're supposed to have your second reading on the Project Sample, the Costco Warehouse Distribution Center, Alpha Porter Road. Estimated $44,000 that they're looking for for infrastructure, that's coming from taxpayers' money. The problem's still gonna be there, because it's still county roads. They're looking at first starting off with over 7,000 trucks in and out daily, four times that when they get to peak season. The incidence, the problem's still gonna be in the roadway that still belongs to the county. So I just asked you to look taxpayers' money, be due diligence, and reject spending this $44 million of the taxpayers' money for infrastructure for a company that the city is gonna benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My understanding is that Sherri Curick, who signed up for the impact fee, has requested to come and speak and leave, so we'll recognize her.
Hello again, I'm Sherri Kerlik, and I still live at 1111 Long Creek Court. And this is indicative of the problem that we are having. A rule is set, a policy is made, and then we ask that you follow it. Public speaking is the first portion of this. It's gracious of you to let me speak now. An impact fee has a process. It has an approved way of being determined, and it has a way of being enforced. You know this, you've done it for Fort Mill. What we're asking is for the same treatment as Fort Mill, equal protection under the law, which means the citizens of Clover, whether they are in the eastern or the western, as long as they are a citizen of Clover in York County, they should be enabled to have the same protection from unreasonable fees as Fort Mill. An impact fee is a law passed by the legislature. The school district has followed the law, as Fort Mill did. We are in overflow in this building from citizens of Clover wanting the same treatment as Fort Mill. If you are worried about developers being able to afford to add $15,000 to the homes in Clover, realize that people of Clover will absorb the cost if you arbitrarily lower that number. Citizens of Clover should not have to make up for the whims of a council member based upon the fact that they feel Clover cannot handle the full impact fee. The Clover School District has followed every rule. The citizens who are packing this building tonight aren't asking for special treatment, they're asking for fair, impartial treatment under the law. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Harry Johnson.
Good evening, council members.
Harry, I think you were here for the impact fee?
Yes.
Are you gonna be here for the public hearing? It's just in two readings. I called Harry. I was under the impression you were gonna speak at the public hearing section.
I only have one hearing aide working. I thought it was Perry. I'll talk to you in a minute.
Thank you, Perry. Is Mr. Harry Johnson here? We like your name.
Good evening. My name is Harry Johnson, and I live at 3591 Enterprise Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina, in the Mount Holly community. I'd like to comment on the proposed Costco warehouse at Porter Road and I-77 on property that, which has recently been annexed by the City of Rock Hill. that which has recently been annexed by the city of Rock Hill. I completely understand why the city of Rock Hill wants this project to go forward. I don't, however, understand why York County is giving serious consideration to giving $30 million to have this train wreck of a warehouse go forward. From the numbers discussed, there will be literally thousands of trucks traveling in and out of this facility daily. There are no modifications that can be made to the Porter Road interchange that would be able to handle this level of truck traffic. This project is a disaster for the people of the area and for York County as a whole. Warehouses are the lowest form of economic expansion there is. Roads are destroyed, traffic flow is ruined, and accidents increase exponentially. And for what? To create 30 jobs for forklift drivers. This is not the kind of economic expansion that should happen in an area that is only 20 minutes from Charlotte, which is the 14th largest city in the United States. This warehouse gives everything to the city of Rock Hill and nothing to the area residents of York County. If the city of Rock Hill wants this so badly, let them pay for all of it. If the city of Rock Hill has over $100 million to waste on the Panthers defunct training facility, then they should certainly be able to pony up the $30 million for this warehouse, which again, only benefits the city of Rock Hill. If Rock Hill wants it, then let Rock Hill write the check. Want to add a comment? York County Economic Development Committee needs to start doing better work than only accepting warehouses for the southern portion of York County. Let's bring some good, clean economic expansion, such as an LPL Financial or 3D Systems, to this area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tim Steele. I reside at 2579 Catawba Church Road. Thank you, council, for your time, energy, and effort that you put into our county to make it what it is today. We very appreciate it. It's not overlooked, and we thank you greatly. I wanted to bring a couple of concerns I have about the proposed Costco distribution center that would be located at I-77 and Porter Road. The old real estate adage of "location, location, location" definitely holds true in this Costco proposal. This I-77 and Porter Road location is zoned industrial, is a large 200-acre tract of land, and is right off the interstate. Those three things combined makes it very lucrative for any corporation and hard to find in other areas of our state or other states for that matter. Given that Costco is a multi-billion dollar company with an estimated net worth of $260 billion, it is hard for York County citizens to understand why we would be giving them a $30 million tax incentive when our property taxes have just gone up. In my opinion, if Costco truly desires this location, which we know they do, $30 million to them is peanuts in comparison to what they will be getting. But $30 million is a lot to the hard-working citizens of York County. So please reconsider giving Costco Corporation a $30 million tax incentive. The other overwhelming concern I have, and many other citizens have, is that this is the first step to southern York County becoming an inland port, very similar to inland port Greer and inland port Dillon that are located in this great state of South Carolina. I would say that the majority of York County taxpayers would be opposed to us becoming the third inland port in South Carolina. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. We do have John Paloka and Kristen Clark, and also, it looks like Mac McCarter on the impact fees. And we're just about to get to the public hearings, so I would ask that those individuals wait for the public hearing. That concludes our public hearing at this time. We do appreciate the comments from the community. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to our first public hearing item. Council to hold a public hearing and consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 155 zoning code, subchapter D, development and design standards to eliminate the maximum number of signs per wall, to add an alternative sign area allowance, and to increase the maximum sign area allowed per wall, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Do we have any information from staff?
Rick Kaboo, you're zoning administrator. I have a few slides to go over the proposed changes that we found could improve code. Do we have another remote, by any chance? Okay, background staff identified some challenges for businesses in sign code, and a couple of them were that we only allow one sign per wall face. And we have some large retailers that have entrances on far sides of large buildings, and it would be really good to have them have two signs, kind of explain what's in that part of the building so they can get nearer to what they're looking for. And they have a maximum sign allowance of 200 square foot, and that may not be adequate for very large stores or structures, or those with a lot of multi-tenant spaces. We originally discussed this at the Planning and Zoning Committee. They made some recommendations and brought it to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission brought it to you, and I'll go over some of those recommendations. Currently, we allow one sign per wall, the allowance, and we do allow one square foot of signage per each linear foot of frontage. And so we have a maximum sign area per wall of 200 square foot. So if a building is larger than 200 square foot, you only get 200 square foot of signage right now. I brought an example up here of the FedEx building. This is a sign, this isn't a 200-square-foot sign, but it gives you an example of the size of things we're looking at. This is probably around 100 square foot on approximately 400 linear foot of building. If we would allow them to have 400 square foot, this is what that'd look like on that big building. This is another structure that's approximately 400 square foot, another example of about a 200-square-foot sign, which is maximum allowed in code right now. This would be how much sign they'd get if it went up to 400 as a recommendation. And we also wanted to look at the allowance of 5% of the wall space as another option. If you did that, you'd get a sign this big at 670 square foot. This comes with the stipulation that you can also draw a limit on that sign. You could say that they could only have 400 square foot or any number around that to bring that sign down a little bit. The 5% works for buildings that are tall but don't have a lot of linear square foot in the width. This is an example of a structure now with our current sign code. It has a sign, and they had at one time proposed to sign that approximately equal to five square foot, 5% of the building face, and that's how large of a sign you get. So we have the recommendations from staff and committee and Planning Commission to eliminate the maximum numbers of all signs and keep it within that limit of the maximum, which is to be decided. And we would like it to allow wall percentage of all signs to be 5% or the one square foot for linear foot allowance. We'd like to see the increase of maximum sign area from 200 to 400. And remember, like a 200-foot building still wouldn't get 400, they still only get 200 because you're measuring how long the building is, so that would limit, they couldn't automatically put 400 square foot unless they had a really long building or a very large building. And then they considered the increase of max sign area up to 600 square foot for buildings over 100,000 square feet. This is what the text amendment would look like if you did such a thing. The staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of the amendment to allow the change allowance 400 square foot, to give it a reasonable amount for large buildings, and to allow unlimited signage as long as they keep the 400 square foot as a maximum, so they could have several signs to advertise on large buildings, and to be divided up between, it could have maximum signs divided up for multiple tenants. The planning, staff and planning commission didn't recommend going up to 600 square foot. They'd, we'd like to see it capped at 400, and if they needed more for a special occasion or something, or a special situation, they could ask for variance.
Any questions before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, so first of all, thank you for this information. Couple of questions. How does this reflect on digital signs?
That wouldn't change. Nothing, according to digital signs, would change or...
Okay, so it would allow digital, it would allow digital signs?
Yeah, it wouldn't change. The allowance for digital signs would remain. There isn't a lot of, yeah, you could still have digital signs, like Lake Wile, it'd still be prohibited.
Okay. And when this is proposed, was there a discussion around the distance of the building from where the road is? So if you're back, you know, 200 feet as opposed to 600 feet, you know, you're not going to see that sign as much, and is there an opportunity to increase the sign if you're further away from the road? Was there any discussion around that?
Other than that, what might be a good reason to grant a variance or something if they couldn't see the sign, or is there some unique condition at site where it wasn't visible for the average person to see?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Our second public hearing is council to hold a public hearing and consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 155 zoning code, subchapter B, zoning districts, subpart 2.2, base district dimensional standards. To increase the maximum height in the general commercial district when a setback from residential lots is provided, to amend subchapter 1, rules of interpretation and measurement, to add certain rooftop amenities or occupiable accessory structures as exceptions to maximum height, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Mr. Buono.
Yes, good evening, council members. Jonathan Buono, planning director. This topic of building height was referred to the P&amp;Z Committee some months ago. The original referral was to discuss industrial districts and commercial districts, and there was a specific reference around hotels. So the committee worked through that discussion, that dialogue, and they settled on a recommendation to make a change to height limits in the GC, general commercial district specifically, and also to add a specific type of height exemption. So here's a draft of what the committee had come up with. So you can see here, we'd add a new line for general commercial that really serves only to add that fourth footnote in the maximum height column, so that buildings in that district in general commercial could go to 60 feet instead of 50 feet as a maximum, as long as they also supplied a 200-foot setback from a residential lot line. Here's the second piece of this text amendment, is to add a new type of exemption from what is measured as maximum height. So here's the existing list, and added here in red would be rooftop amenities, such as recreational areas or accessory occupiable rooftop spaces. A lot of dialogue was around rooftop bars, things like that, so that you could have those on top of a roof, and it would be exempted from the maximum height. We added some criteria there, so we weren't having essentially a whole nother story beyond that 50 feet or 60 feet, whatever the height limit for the particular district might be, so that you had no more than 15 feet above the roof line for that accessory structure, and there was a one-to-one step-back ratio. So if the building was 10 feet over the roof line, it would need to be at least 10 feet from the edge of the roof line, so that folks aren't having to look up at a large bulking structure. But here's an example of what that looks like. So you can see going from 50 to 60 feet, what that looks like in general commercial. Then there's that rooftop amenity, and then the square at the top of the example there where it says rooftop bar, that's Eagle's View looking down. You can see that step-back, that's assuming that rooftop bar would be 15 feet in height above the roof line, so you'd want to have that 15 feet step-back from the edge of the roof. Staff and planning commission both recommend approval of this amendment. Now, the height exemption would be fairly unique in South Carolina, but given the fact that the height for general commercial is allowed in most places in South Carolina to go much higher than the base level with additional setbacks, we felt it was appropriate to have that type of limited height exemption, especially with the qualifiers in there that you had to have a step-back and a maximum height above the roof line as well. So those protections were put in place, and having that additional setback from residential lot lines for additional height in GC would help protect properties that might be situated directly adjacent to GC today that might have a residence on it.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions before we open public hearing?
Yeah, I do have one quick question. When we look at the rooftop, and I know you did an example of the bar, whatever restaurant on top, if, so when it comes to heavy-duty equipment, so a lot of your, you know, some businesses put their air conditioning units at the top, et cetera, how does the height of those impact this?
Yes, those are already on the exempted projection list.
They're already exempted?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this matter? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, matter is approved. We move now to our third public hearing item. Council to hold a public hearing and consider amending second reading of an ordinance reviewing and updating the public education facility's impact fee imposed on all new residential development in the Clover School District Number Two pursuant to York County Ordinance 3020, to revise the established impact fee on new residential development for a single-family detached dwelling unit to $15,035, to revise the established impact fee for a multifamily dwelling unit to $7,430, and to revise the established impact fee for a manufactured home unit to $9,842, to authorize a revised intergovernmental agreement between York County and the Clover School District Number Two, defining the prospective rights, responsibilities, and obligations of the parties regarding the impact fee, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anyone who's been following this matter, which I know is most of you in this room, I would anticipate, council has been asking a series of questions and have asked for information to be provided back to them in the form of legal advice in executive session. I have been given a request from management and legal that council consider having that discussion immediately right now to get some feedback before we open the public hearing. I wanted to make sure, I've been out of pocket all day today, so I just want to make sure that council is aware of that request. In my mind, I don't have an issue if council wants to make a request that we go into executive session now. I do think it's important that this not be a long executive session if we're asking, giving folks the opportunity to speak publicly. So if it turns out that it needs to be any longer than 10 or 15 minutes, then I think that we may need to, as a council, revisit that because folks have taken off time to come speak. So I will leave it up to the council to make a motion for executive session if they so wish.
Madam Chair, if we go into executive session, are we going to be learning anything differently than what's already been shared with us?
I hope so. I don't know what the point would be.
Yeah, I would. I don't know what's...
That's a question for y'all. Yes, we are going to learn some new information?
Yes, you will.
Thank you, sir.
Why would we go executive session now or wait on, after public hearing?
I'm fine with that. We can wait.
Which wait? We'll wait until we hear from y'all. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? And the way this is written, it's probably anyone who wants to speak, just come forward and speak on the matter, if you want to be heard on it.
Good evening. My name is Caleb Standifer. I live at 158 Evening Shadow Road in Lake Wiley. I've been at Clover School District I've been a Clover School District resident since 2022. I'm here about the impact fee. My wife and I own a lot on Buckley Road that we purchased in 2022. We attempted to build in 2023, but our builder withdrew at the last minute. We're ready to build again, but we have no children living with us. Our children are adults. Here's the problem. A $15,000 impact fee will cost us $93 per month in additional loan payments. That means we'll need $406 more per month in monthly income just to qualify for a loan. Over 30 years, we will pay $33,480 in principal and interest for a $15,000 impact fee that won't result in a single additional child attending Clover Schools. This isn't just about us. This policy increases costs for existing residents who already live in the district, not just newcomers. Affordability matters, especially to younger generations trying to buy their first homes. I understand exemptions may be legally difficult, so here's my solution. At previous meetings, some residents said they'd gladly pay higher impact fees because schools are important. Let them prove it. Establish a voluntary fund that these generous citizens can contribute to. Use it to subsidize impact fees for current residents like us who won't add to the system. The D2 council member could administer it, avoiding any legal complications with the fee structure itself. This is fair, this is legal, and it lets those who support higher fees put their money where their mouth is, without forcing costs on residents who won't impact the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Cheryl Malayer, 1023 Ledgewood Lane, Clover. I also do not have children. I did vote for the bond because schools are important, and I don't want to continue to pay for other people coming and gaining more access. There's people that have been here that are now paying higher taxes because we passed that bond. So I want the right to be wrong, the wrong to be right. But I mean, we cannot keep paying for growth for the people that have been here. So I do not have children in school. I voted for the bond because I want our schools to be good, but I do not want to keep paying for them. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mac McCarter. I reside at 1461 Paul Boyd Road, Clover. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council's concerns regarding the proposed impact fee, specifically in relation to discussions that took place while I served as a board trustee of Clover School District. In Bond One, Clover School District had a capital improvement plan for High School Number Two, which is Lake Wiley High School now, that included a stadium at about $6.2 million. In Bond Two, Clover School District Construction Management Team updated the CIP for High School Two and advised that the stadium would cost, the cost would escalate to about $10 million. The board anticipated that interest rate and construction cost would rise when presented with estimates from Bond One and passage of Bond Two. We examined many options to reduce and considered areas where resources could be shared temporarily until additional funding became available. One specific area was a football facility. We considered two options. Option one, include the football stadium at Lake Wiley High as part of the bond. Option two, share the current Clover Stadium until funds allowed for a new facility site for Lake Wiley High. The board decided that a shared high school stadium at the current location would not be a fair or effective long-term solution. The problem in spring scheduling, Clover High School would have four girls' boys soccer teams and four girls' boys lacrosse team, with JV and varsity competing at Lake Wiley High School with the same eight teams, all competing for space to play and hold fan attendance. Keep in mind, recreational facilities are included in the high school CIP. This includes baseball, baseball fields, softball fields, tracks, practice fields, tennis courts, and stadiums. To clarify, the board discussed the stadium at length. It was never a matter of if the district would build, but when the district would build. The best way currently to help the taxpayers pay for these fields is to use the impact fee to offset costs. Clover School District would have accumulated $21 million in impact fee collections from 2021 to now. The stadium would have been bid and underway, which would have made it much less expensive than we see currently. And I will close with the following. We can all debate the pros and cons of impact fees. There are good arguments on both sides to consider, but the previous county council and present county council agreed to use data presented by Digital Vice. The same consulting firm presented the impact fee data Fort Mill School District two separate times, and county council fully supported those two proposals. No one in this council presently or past has presented factual data to uphold this council's opposition to the full impact fee proposed for Clover School District. Many of us continue to scratch our heads how the math in applying impact fee works for some school districts in our county, but not for all districts. Let's review county council impact fee math. In Fort Mill, the math is 2 plus 2 equals 4. In Clover School District, apparently, 2 plus 2 equals 2. In York, 2 plus 2 unfortunately equals 0. Being consistently inconsistent on this topic presents an image of incompetence that I hope can be resolved in the upcoming consideration and your vote. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, excuse me, Mark Mix, because I'm the executive director for the Home Builders Association of South Carolina, 625 Taylor Street, Columbia. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to ground this discussion in three clear and irrefutable facts drawn from the district's own numbers and from the South Carolina state law. First, enrollment is declining. According to the official 180-day count used by the South Carolina Department of Education, Clover Schools have lost 71 students over the past two years, from a peak of 8990 to 8919 today. That is the measure the state recognizes because it reflects the students who are actually to complete the year and consume capacity. This district instead cites the 45-day count, which inflates enrollment by 119 students. Students withdrew, moved, or never completed the year. You cannot justify a capacity-based fee when enrollment is going down, not up. Second, Clover has 856 empty seats in its core facilities. Middle and high schools combined have a capacity of 5,500 to 563, an enrollment of 4707. That is 533 open high school seats and 323 open middle school seats, leaving the district at 84.6% utilization, well below the industry norm in 90 to 95%, but typically justifies the impact fees. The simple question is, where is the capacity crisis? Third, there are serious legal concerns about how the district intends to spend the impact fees. This district's capital improvement plan includes activity buses under South Carolina Code 61922. Impact fees may only fund capital improvements that increase the service capacity of the facility. Activity buses transport students to sports and field trips. They do not add to the classroom seats, expand buildings, or increase the number of students the district can serve. Even if some types of vehicles theoretically qualify under the statute, activity buses do not meet the increased capacity test. Before another dollar is dispersed, council should request a formal legal opinion from the South Carolina Attorney General to determine whether these expenditures comply with state law. That brings us to the $2.65 million dispersed in March 2025. That occurred despite declining enrollment, 856 empty seats, and a CIP that includes questionable expenditures. If fees are spent improperly or without legal nexus, the code requires the county to refund them back to the homeowner. Finally, I want to stress, who pays for these mistakes? Clover is a rural generational community of teachers, nurses, firefighters, and public service workers. The school district's request would add about $100 a month to the mortgage and almost $180 to the rent. That's not even including those for new construction. That's existing going forward. While with reports showing that first-time buyers are reaching the age of 40, we will have detrimental impact on the families in the communities. These families are being priced out to fund empty seats and potentially non-eligible purchases. I hope you will consider keeping the impact fee at $4,000, obtain a South Carolina Attorney General legal opinion onto whether the activity buses are satisfactory expenditures, require full transparency and justification for the $2.65 million that's already been dispersed, and require that future studies use actual capacity, actual students sitting in the schools and not made-up numbers. Impact fees are not discretionary revenue. They are narrowly limited by law, and today, the facts and the law both say the same thing. Clover simply does not meet the legal standard for additional school impact fees. Thank you.
John Payaloka, thank you everyone up there for giving me an opportunity to speak again. New growth should pay for new growth. There are words of some people that sat up there. The study that was done from the other school district was a $30,000 impact fee. Clover is asking for only 50% less, $15,000, which is also only 75% of what the recommendation was, which was $21,000. Okay? I pay taxes. Somebody had said that Clover doesn't pay their fair share because the mills are so low. Well, our mills in Clover are based off of actual value. My daughter has a house in Rock Hill, and her mills are based off of assessed value, which is only about 40% of the true value of the house. When I figured out the math between her taxes and my taxes, Clover were paying $100, a dollar per square foot, and Rock Hill was paying 73 cents per square foot. So Clover does pay their fair share. Without this impact fee, our taxes are going to go higher. We have a business with, I have a business in Clover with my partners, and we pay a lot of money for business tax. But there's also a lot we get out of that paying for the business tax. We have students that work for us, where the faculty comes in and helps us. We are definitely community-focused. And this is a wonderful community, and this issue is a community issue. It's not a school district issue. There are so many different things that I had written down that obviously I don't have, I don't want to take all the time because I know there's people behind me. But I will say this, there was, the very last dairy farm was just sold in Charlotte. It was 200 acres. And it's sold for $24.6 million. And the developer is still going to make money. New growth should pay for new growth. You know, it's a sensitive issue with family land. Been in the family for generations. If there's a house that goes on the property, chances are it's going to affect the school. My kids are grown. I haven't, you know, I could complain about it, but it goes to the students, it goes to the faculty, it goes to the teachers, which is what we want, or at least what I want in my community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
John Gossett, 5717, Lake Wiley Road. First of all, I remember when Fort Mill went up for their impact fee in the beginning. The Home Builders Association said it wasn't legal, had all kinds of made-up reasons why. Took it to court, they lost every step of the way, all the way to the State Supreme Court. Now, if they want to say, well, there's all kind of legal problems with the Clover impact fee, and they want to sue, bring it. Bring it. I'm going to hit a couple of points, and I won't belabor a lot of this. First of all, I want to touch on something near and dear to my heart, the will of the people. Our previous council rep was part of the reduction, led the reduction in our impact fee in 2020. She was running unopposed. She lowered our impact fee to $4,000. Four years later, think about it, run unopposed. Four years later, didn't just get voted out, got blown out of office. 75 to 25, it was a rout. Impact fees was the top reason. There were some other reasons. That was the number-one reason. If that ain't the will of the people, I don't know what is. But then, look at how many emails y'all have gotten. How many for and how many against? Oh, it's very one-sided. And some people have been a little spicy in their emails because there have been some complaints about bad names called. Well, there's a lot of passion behind this in our, in our district. People are mad. They know what right looks like, and what's gone on so far with lowering our, trying to lower our impact fee is just not right. Now, I know there's people that will complain, that will argue, we're a democracy, we're a constitutional republic. I don't care if you call us an angry unicorn farm. It's based on one thing, will of the people. Either one, I dare anybody to say the will of the people is not a foundation of our country. It's a very important component. It can't just be ignored when it's so one-sided. You just can't ignore it. I want to shift gears to CSD. Why I care? Both of my kids graduated, class of 2020, class of 2023. My kids, I watched a lot of their friends. They had a huge group of friends. I watched all of them grow up with my kids. They are all some of the most incredible young adults that you will see right now. They're all pursuing different career options. They're all great successes. And they all have one thing in common. There's nothing special about special tutors or special schools and nothing. No, they just went through the Clover School District. They had teachers that didn't just teach, but inspired them. I've talked to my kids. How many times do you hear a kid say a teacher inspired them? Both of my kids have told me that, and their friends have told me that. And some of the teachers that inspired them are probably retired now. There's a long list. I won't take the time to call a lot of them out. But the encouraging thing is we still got new teachers coming in that are just as much an inspiration to our students. That's how good our school district is. There's a young lady I want to recognize tonight, Dr. Brittany Terry.
Raise your hand.
She didn't teach my kids, but I wish she'd had. I mean, she's that good. And she's just one of so many other creative, outstanding teachers that don't just teach their kids, they literally inspire their kids. One day, kids are going to call, refer to you as a teacher that inspired me, just like my kids have with some of their teachers. That's a great school district. I know some of y'all don't have a school district that great, but we do, and we're going to fight to protect it. Clover School District is fiscally responsible. I don't care who tries to slander them and say different. They got the statistics to prove it. It's not their fault that the impact fee got gutted in 2020. Three of y'all were part of that. It's not their fault post-COVID inflation exploded the cost of our high school. And then most of y'all voted for the tariffs back in November. I know one of you didn't, but the rest of you probably did. Your vote added tariffs on top of that. Both of those have hammered our cost of our high school. But why do I care? There are selfish people out there. I see them all the time on social media saying, my kids are out of school. I shouldn't have to do this. I shouldn't have to do that. When we all went through school, people paid for our way. It's our job to take care of the kids that's coming on now. When you look at an economy, the most powerful part of an economy are workers between, different people will adjust by a couple of numbers, but basically the age group 25 to 50 is the most impactful part of the economy. That's the ones who get the work done. That's the ones who start new businesses. That's where the innovation comes from. That's the engine of our economy. Each one of y'all, there's a lot of gray hair up there, just like I got. Each one of you, right now, add 20 years to your age, where are you going to be? I know where you're going to be. You know where you're going to be. You're going to be retired, every one of you. That workforce is going to keep you safe, take care of you, power the economy, do everything, run the country, defend the country, do everything. Where do you think that workforce is? Not hypothetical. It's not a theory. It's real. It exists right now. I'll tell you where they are. They're the kids that graduated within the last five years. My son's class 2020, my daughter's class 2023, all the way up to now, the past five years, and all the kids in school right now, all the way to pre-K. If you're 50 or above, that's the workforce that's going to take care of all of us. We screw them, we screw ourselves. I'll close with one last thing. I'll close with one last thing. Not long ago, I saw an interview, I believe it was on WSOC, and it was talking about Costco. And an elected official said, it's our job to grow the tax base, it's not our job to grow the school district. Well, nobody asked you to grow the school district. But I'll tell you what, it is part of your job. It is to take care of the school district. I don't care if it's any new company coming in needs to pay their fair share into the school district, because they're going to bring growth. And the school district has to pay, has to deal with it, and that costs them money. The school district has no say when y'all approve all those housing developments. I say y'all, some of y'all weren't there then, but all these housing developments that's in District Two, that's online, lots of them. I want the school district's fault that they got approved. They were approved in this chamber, but schools got to deal with it. So every company that comes here needs to pay its fair share into the school district, and every new home that comes into the Clover School District, they need to pay their fair share upfront. We're tired of people moving here and getting a free ride. They need to pay their fair share upfront and take care of our school district.
My name's Jeff Ledford, live at 2095 Cutter Point Drive in Lake Wiley. Been up here many times over the last number of weeks speaking about this topic. Some as just a citizen of Clover School District, and some as a representative for Lake Wiley Chamber of Commerce. And this topic affects everyone, whether you have kids in school, whether you don't, whether you're retired, whether you have a business. You folks are going to make a decision which way you want to vote, and your decision is going to have a negative effect on the citizens of Clover School District and businesses within Clover School District if you vote not to allow CSD, the impact fees that they have requested, that they have documents for to support their request. We've heard a lot of talk about let, let growth pay for growth, correct the mistakes. We know a few things for sure. We know there's still a lot of housing that's going to pop up in Clover School District over the next two or three years. And we know that we need to plan for that growth. We can't afford to wait another five years when this impact fee will expire, and we come back, hat in hand, handout, asking for another impact fee to help us get caught up like we're having to do now because the impact fee was gutted five years ago. So now we're behind. Why are we behind? Because cost of everything has gone up. So you tell me, what's, what's it going to be like in five more years? Nobody knows for sure, but you, you can bet inflation is going to happen, cost of everything is going to go up, and we're going to be faced with the same problems. Why not allow us to catch up instead of getting further and further behind and allow us to plan and prepare for growth? If you vote against this, it is a guaranteed tax increase for everyone within the school district, retirees, new folks, folks that have been here for 50 years, old and young, hit childless, still going to face tax increase. And it will also affect our businesses, which we're struggling right now. Our business environment is not good. I've had numerous conversations with small business owners that are really questioning how much longer can I stay in business in this area? When I can move this business 17 miles up the road into another state that seems to value their patronage, their business more than this state does? You see it all the time. You read about it all the time, other business moving their headquarters or moving their businesses from South Carolina into North Carolina. One of the issues that I'm pretty sure I've read about and heard about that, that seems to be a real sticking point, and I was disappointed that we weren't able to hear the results of the questions that were presented to management. Basically, if I understand it correctly, is there a way we can exempt those landowners that have been here for many, many years and want to build on that land for their family? That is certainly valid, and I think that needs to be addressed, but it's not an issue for county council. It is an issue for the state because it is a state law, a state statute. And certainly, I would be more than willing to volunteer, to provide resources of the chamber, to assist the county council, to assist anyone that wants to pursue it on a state level with our local representatives, because we need it fixed for those folks in this entire state. Lastly, I know you all are wishing this would be over with soon. I know you all are tired of talking about impact fees, but I do want to say that it is an honor to be allowed to speak in front of you on any issue that we would like to, and I appreciate your attention and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, members of council and staff. Yeah, I generally answer to Jerry and Perry and Larry and Perry, but tonight I'm going to come to you as Perry Johnston, and I live at 5001 Lake Miss Drive in the Northeast Bethel section of the Clover School District. My, actually, my family, the Johnsons and the, and the boys moved into the new acquisition, as it was called back then, later became York County, and more specifically, the Clover School District in the 1770s. So we got a little skin in this game. My grandparents taught in the Clover School District, both at the Laney Building and at Concord Road School. More recently, four generations after them of my family have since attended Clover Schools. We've been paying school tax for a long time, which is fine. I don't currently have any immediate family members in the Clover School District, and I'm still paying Clover School District tax, which is fine. That is what we're supposed to do in order to educate the children of our district. What is not fine is to allow new families to come in to our great school district and not require them to have any skin in the game, so to say. This is not fine, to come in and overburden the schools and not require to pay to play, so to speak. It is not fair to place all of the required added tax burden on the shoulders of those of us who have been here and have been paying for many years just for the newcomers to come in and not be required to pay upfront. Citizen Clover School District elected our school board to make decisions on what is needed to maintain our great district. They have studied and used the same company that Fort Mill School District has used to determine the current requested impact fee and to be applied to all those new families moving in. The county council has supported the Fort Mill School Board and all of their prior impact fees. And I ask you to support the Clover School Board on their decision on the current impact fee for the Clover School District. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Eric Burkhart, 851 Riddle Mill Road, Clover. I'll keep this short. We moved here 28 years ago from Spartanburg County. I took a job in Charlotte, moved my family up here, and when we started looking for a place, well, schools was a huge consideration because we had one start in high school and one start in junior high. I now have grandchildren in the same system, and yet it is generational, and I hope it remains that way. And the impact fee is just part of the cost of living in this great area. And Clover School District does a great job, they did a great job with my two kids, they're doing a great job with my grandchildren, and whatever they need to succeed, I'm behind it 100%. Thank you all for your time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mallory Ditmer, 899 Stratford Run Drive, and I'm here today as a York County resident, congressional candidate for South Carolina's 5th District, and founding organizer of Cape York County, that's Community Advocates for Public Education, York County. I live in Fort Mill, my two kids attend Fort Mill Schools, and my husband's a teacher at Katapurridge High School. I want to start by thanking you all for approving the full impact fees for Fort Mill earlier this year. It was the right thing to do. Now, on behalf of my family, we ask that you do the right thing for our friends in Clover. Friends, rivals, on the way here, my nine-year-old reminded me that Katapurridge did beat y'all in football this year, in overtime, on your home turf, on Halloween. So it's the least we can do. But seriously, I know from personal experience that our schools are the reason families are flocking to York County. We chose Fort Mill for many reasons, for its schools most of all. And I met families at a campaign event in Lake Wiley last week who enthusiastically said the same thing about Clover. Everyone in this room, even our home builders, are indebted to the educators and district leaders in this room and across the county for making York County the very best place to live in South Carolina. Our schools are the reason for our growth, and we've seen in Fort Mill, our schools and communities thrive when proper funding is prioritized. Even with the passage of the impact fees, future burden will surely be laid on taxpayers as the South Carolina Department of Education continues to cut the public education budget to fund private school discounts or vouchers. Last school year, York County Public School Districts lost $1.8 million to the voucher scheme, and that number is already set to grow to $7 million next school year. If we want to see our schools and communities continue to thrive, we need to come together as constituents and taxpayers, as electeds, school districts, home builders, and prioritize public school funding. In closing, I ask you to please follow the successful model we've seen in Fort Mill, let growth pay for growth, and approve the full impact fees for CSD, or at a minimum, the $15,000 the district has offered as a compromise. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is John Segura. I am the District Two Planning Commission representative for the last four years, but I'd like to speak tonight as the resident and taxpayer of the Clover School District. Esteemed council members and county management, thank you for this opportunity. I've listened with interest since having participated in the planning commission review of the Clover District proposal for new impact fees. And I have been particularly troubled by the lack of consistent information that's been published on the impact fee itself. If you look at the affordability of housing as a key component, I mean, you can look at the national level, it was mentioned that the average age of homeownership now for first-time buyers is 40 years old. President Trump actually proposed at a national level that we consider 50-year mortgages because of the affordability, the lack of affordability of housing for any number of issues. So this highlights that the affordability issue of housing is recognized at top levels of government today, and it's affecting quite a number of people. Locally, the most recent statistical advice studies have updated the methodology for reviewing housing affordability. In the original studies, a cost-burden analysis was performed, taking into consideration many additional factors beyond the impact fee that are part of homeownership. This study was not updated in the latest presentation. It was removed, and in its place was a quick and dirty analysis of what your monthly payment would be if the impact fee passed and you had a mortgage at a particular interest rate. It was noted in the first impact fee study that certain parts of the district already showed a moderately burdensome amount of money to many homeowners without the impact fee being included in the calculation. And at that time, interest rates were 2%, 3%. We now know that that's, that's kind of a wish for that to come back, but we'll have to see. Suffice it to say that today, these numbers are no longer applicable, and that higher housing costs and interest rates are likely pushing that burdensome percentage even higher. Second issue that I wanted to discuss quickly was the value of the impact fee that's being proposed in dollars and cents. I'm not talking about the $7,000, et cetera. I'm talking about the extended value of what we're talking about. It's not the silver bullet to improve the financial conditions of Clover School District at this point. When asked when the impact, what will the impact fee revenue be going forward amount to, Clover School District was not prepared to answer that question. Since then, several numbers have been thrown around. Let me look at this two ways, based on the number of pending residential developments as well as historical permit trends. Based on York County Planning Department numbers, there are 2,290 potential pending units. Of these, 7, 971 are exempt from paying $1 in impact fees. That's 42% of the home construction in the next five years will not pay any impact fee. If, if we look at the remaining units, 518 of those units represent carryover of units that have been on the books since as early as 2013 and still pending. Subtracting those that will not be paying an impact fee, we're talking about 1,310 units that could pull permits in the unincorporated area in Clover. What does that translate to in dollars that we could hope to collect? At the new fee of $7,000, those 1,310 units don't total $10 million. It's $9 million and change. At the maximum of 15, that gets closer to a $20 million number. If you look at another way to measure this, which is the history of permits over the last several years, let's say the average number of single-family permits is 227 a year. Multi-family was 108, and mobile homes was five. That generates combined $4.2 million a year in potential impact fees, using the current rate, which incidentally is going down. The biggest year we had was first year, and then subsequent to that, the only increase was when the 240-some-odd bail apartments were approved and included in that number. Either way that we look at this potential Either way that we look at this potential revenue, it's likely going to be $10 to $12 million. That's not chump change. I'm not suggesting it is. But it's not the funding opportunity that we think is going to offset any tax increase or millage rate. It's not a silver bullet. And we need to look at other sources of revenue in the school district. Growth doesn't pay for growth under the current scenario. It only helps offset some of the changes in the CIP projects. I would ask, I would end with this question. No one has suggested that if the impact fees pass at whatever level, that approval would guarantee that there would be no taxes, additional taxes going forward. That speaks volumes for where we're headed. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to address the council and staff. And hopefully, you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pam Kato, and I live at 585 Calabash Road in Clover, South Carolina. First, I want to thank you for your service. I've listened to all this, and I know you've got a lot of hard decisions to make, not only on this, but other things regarding York County. I'm a retired educator for the Clover School District. Very proud. I'm a lifelong resident of Clover. I worked for 42 years in the Clover School System. And I probably don't think I'm that old, but that was 10 years ago when I retired. As a young principal, and I was principal out at Bethany in the mid-'90s, I, you know, being a new principal, you wanted everybody to like your decisions. You wanted everybody to agree with you. Well, guess what? It didn't happen. I don't know why I thought being a principal would make everybody like me, but they didn't. Not always. And I had a superintendent that I admired a lot, Betty Riddle. And when she would mentor me as a young principal, she said, "You know Kato," and she'd call me Kato, "Kato, you're not going to make everybody happy, but you've got to decide what's, how you're going to make your decisions. And all I can tell you is you have to do what's best for kids. If you do what's best for kids, you can sleep at night because you made the right decision." And that's what I want y'all to do when you think about these impact fees. Do what's right for kids. I was the principal at Bethany when Bethany needed to be expanded. We were at maximum capacity. Nobody thought we would be in the mid-'90s. We'd been there 10 years, that new building. We had to increase class size. I'm an instructional leader. That is not good for instruction. You can ask any teacher, when you add three, four, or five kids to that classroom, those teachers cannot provide the kind of instruction that they need. What else did we do? We had some small designated classrooms for intense instruction. We had to knock out a wall so we could make it a bigger classroom. Where did I put those people? I put them in closets, in storage rooms, in little places where those kids who needed to focus couldn't focus because they saw everything around them. And guess what else we did? We added a mobile unit out in the playground, in the playground. Now, how much instruction do you think's going on in that mobile unit when they hear all those kids? Folks, that's what happens when we get to capacity. And Clover is growing. We may have had a couple of years where we weren't, but it's coming. It comes to Bethany. Bethany has had a second addition since the one that was when I was principal. None of these options are good for instruction. They're not good for kids. So when you think about voting for this, think about the kids in Clover. They're our future. And without good instruction, we're all going to be hurt. Thank you.
My name is Brittany Terry. I'm at 5039 Mill Creek. My son's a senior at Clover High School. He's brilliant. He's in the top 10 students graduating this school year. He's MIT-bound. He's been taking as many AP classes as possible, so he doesn't have to choose between three college majors next year. He wants to do all of them. Unfortunately, several of his coveted class periods over the last four years have been study hall because there's nowhere to put him. He currently has early release this year because there's, again, nowhere to put him. My daughter was in the same boat before graduating two years ago. I'm not sure where this extra capacity is that was mentioned earlier. After Mallory's talk, a Fort Mills football team beating Clover, let me tell you what Clover beat Fort Mill in. Fifth grade math, which is what I teach. And clearly, a math lesson is in order tonight. The $30,000 Fort Mill fees approved at 100% is much more than the amount Clover requested. The same experts, the same council. The $4,000 to $7,000 the council is willing to provide is much less than the amount Clover requested. See, math is not hard. Let's remember that a rising tide lifts all boats. Please support Clover's fees.
Can I move this down? I'm really short. Hi, Jessica Cody. I live at 1694 South Highway 161, York, but I'm Clover School District, Clover Board of Trustees since 2020. So as I've mentioned before, I have spoken in front of council in the past about impact fees in support of that, even as a real estate agent, which I am still currently in real estate. So what I want to talk about is a few of the numbers you guys have been given. First of all, we do enrollment based on our 45-day count because we graduate at least 100 to 150, probably more than that in the future. It's growing every year, kids in December, which is why we do not do enrollment past that December graduation date. We need seats for those kids when the doors open. So we can't say, hey, we've got, you know, you have 200 kids gone. Well, they were there in the beginning of the year. We have to have seats for them. Impact fees are so important that our entire community has come out. They've sent emails. They are in full support of this. And I want to thank you guys honestly, because you've asked a lot of really good questions. You have done your due diligence. We appreciate that. It has given us an opportunity to answer those questions in full as a district. It has given us an opportunity to make sure there is no question on anything that you might need to vote on. It's unfortunate that you all have to sit up there and vote on impact fees. It should be a district's decision. I believe in small government. I was elected by my constituents to make these decisions. We have made the decision that we need to ask for an impact fee. We've done that study. We've provided that data. That is what our constituents are telling us they want. So here we are. I say every year, and my superintendent can speak to this, the worst day as a school board member is the day I have to vote to raise taxes. I know you all feel that. It's a horrible, horrible thing to do. Do we have to do it? Yes. A lot of times, we do. And we try really hard. And we are really, really good at staying fiscally conservative in Clover. We keep our taxes as low as we possibly can because that is what is best for our constituents. We also have to do what's best for our teachers and our students. We have this number of things we have to look at, just like you all do. Ours are on a smaller basis. We have our district we have to take care of. And we are doing that as a board and as a district, taking care of our district. We hope that you all, because we have come to you with, we're willing to talk compromises. We came to you with $15,000 when we could have come to you with 21. I would personally like to see the 21. I think that that's what our community would support, our full impact fee. You hear that "full" all the time. Full is 21. If, so we've already come at a compromise. I've heard that word. I would like to see, I would love to see the urban boundary set up. I think that would be fantastic. If it's legally possible, that's a win. That's a win for people in my area. I represent the western part of our district. I have the biggest land mass of any board member because we're so spaced out out there. We have built room into Bethany and Larn, or things like growth that we know is coming. And as a real estate agent, I'm telling you, it's coming. We talk about capacity. Well, we've got thousands of homes that haven't been built yet that are already approved. That is going to hit our capacity. That's what we are planning for. We are trying to be fiscally responsible and plan ahead for the growth we already know is coming. It's already there. So that's what we're here for. And we're asking you to support us in the work we've already done for our taxpayers, for our students, and for our teachers, to make sure that we can get things done properly. That there's been questions about the stadium. Those have been answered. They have been legally answered. The questions about the buses, they have been legally answered. So now, we've already gone over those hurdles. We've already answered those questions for you. And we're here asking for what we are legally allowed to ask for, for the taxpayers in the Clover School District. So I thank you again for all of the time. I know that you all are tired of impact fee discussions. I'm sure of it. We are tired of it. I thank you for all of the time you've put into that, and like I said, all the questions you've asked. We are, I like to do my due diligence as well before I make big decisions, especially big decisions that are going to impact, impact people. I want to say really quickly on real estate, there's a lot of talk about affordable housing. I understand that. I work with first-time homebuyers. I have a first-time homebuyer under contract right now. I work with builders. I've sold houses for individual builders as well. When affordable housing has to be something that we work together as a community to get to, that's important. But we're talking about affordable housing on new construction, buying land, you have to have 20% down to purchase that land, to even start your build at that point. So when we're talking about first-time homebuyers, we're talking about people that are getting these loans to buy already existing homes in our area that are priced below what new construction is priced at. I've sold new construction. It is not at $200,000. Trust me. You're talking eight, nine, a million dollars. And that is in my district, in my area of the school district. So kids that are going to go to Bethany, kids that are going to go to Larn, that's what a new house costs. I provided data for you before that came straight from the MLS of what average homes are in my area, directly from the MLS. The new construction only is what I pulled for you. So when we're talking about affordable housing, let's be realistic about what affordable housing is and where it is. And it's not in new construction typically. I would love to see it be in new construction. I have two kids living at home, a 20-year-old and a 22-year-old. I want them to get out. So at some point, I want them to be able to move out and buy a home. And we're working towards that. But we need to be realistic in our numbers. And we have provided all the data I think that you all need. So again, thank you so much. I'm going to let other people speak, but we appreciate you very much.
My name is Bill Jenkins. I live at 720 Ramah Church Road. Know where that is? Good. Not many people do, do they? That's in Clover School District, but in western, western, western York County almost. I've lived there a long time. First, I want to say thank you to board members, council members, rather, for allowing this discussion. I know it's been long and painful. I was here for the first time this year and one time last year. And Madam Chair, especially your patience with people. If I was that close to gavel, I probably would have used it a couple of times on folks. But anyhow, I'm not going to say a lot of things that's already been said because I've heard when you do public forums, you shouldn't repeat what other people have said. So I won't. A lot of these folks have said the same thing I say about taxes and Clover being a good school system. I'll just tell you about Bill Jenkins briefly, and I'll let you get on to somebody more important. I was raised in York County, went to Clover Schools. They provided a great education. They provided education for my wife and my two daughters. So I am a very strong supporter of all public schools, but especially the Clover School District. I found out through these discussions that I am a, let me get this right, a generational landowner. Is that right, what I've heard around here? Because the land that I own has been in my family for several years. I have grandchildren, obviously. And if they want to come and build a house on my land, great, that's fine. They'll probably get a real deal on it. But I think they ought to pay the impact fee. I don't have students in school now, but I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And again, if they wanted to build, I think they ought to pay the impact fee. And I have no problem with that. Because that land has been in my family for 50, 60, 70 years. To me, doesn't cut any ice. I should do that, and they should do the same thing that we do. The thing that I would say to you is I would say to them, perhaps, is of that commercial years ago of pay me now or pay me later. I think they were selling oil filters or something. But my point is, if we pay now with an impact fee, the chances are we're going to be paying less in property tax in the next few years. If you don't, the chances are very, very good that we'll have bond referendum and we'll be paying more and more taxes. Somewhere out there, those lines cross. I studied math at one time. But I encourage you to look at that way. The second thing is, it's a good school system, and I don't want it to take backseat to other school systems because we can't afford to finance the buildings for it. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you, sir. This, I would ask, just as a matter of letting council know if you want to stand, if you support the impact fee, I want to make sure that folks don't, that folks feel like that they're being recognized and maybe not have to necessarily speak, trying to not squelch public, public discussion, but want to make sure that we can move the meeting along. I've had this request made. Raise your hand if you support the impact fee. Raise your hand if you do not. Okay. I think at least it's important for council to at least see that. And, oh, we've got a whole, we've got a whole book. Okay. How many, can you just tell me how many folks are in there? 50 people up there? Okay. Make sure we recognize them, too.
Hey, good evening. Hey, good evening. Laura Bradshaw, 512 Red Wolf Lane. We moved here when my daughter was in first grade. It's Assembly Day at Crowder's Creek Elementary. Oops, sorry, only the even grades can go because our school is too full. Seventh grade, French class, in a trailer. Ninth grade, homecoming on the football field. So that's my first role here. I'm a parent and a taxpayer. My second role is I'm a speech pathologist for the Clover School District. That means I work with kids with severe to profound communication difficulties. One of the classes that I work in has five children in it, who are in wheelchairs and who can't speak. So could I shove 20 more desks in that classroom? Yes. Can those students be educated in that environment? No, they cannot. So listening to those seat numbers be manipulated by someone without an interest in education is absolutely infuriating. We are here for the students of Clover School District, and it's our duty to pass the full impact fee.
Hilda Williams, 6439 Boulder Drive. I was not planning on speaking tonight, so I have a food line receipt with some notes I jotted and borrowed a pencil from somebody. Anyhow, I think we do need a brain break. I'm a second-grade teacher, so if anybody does need to stand up and take a quick little brain break, because I have my students do that when I see them kind of wilting, y'all may need one, too, I will be quick. I no longer have children in the district, but I did. I'm still willing to pay the impact fee. And as a matter of fact, I paid the impact fee, the $4,000, because I built a house. Yay me. And I would pay it again. Why? Because I love the area. I love the school districts. I love everything about it. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kelly Clark, 3513 Aqua Point Drive, York. I am a Clover High School teacher. I am also the Roaring Eagle Editor-in-Chief. Last time I spoke to you, I spoke to you as a homeowner. Tonight, I just wanted to model for my reporters what I ask of them, and that is to speak up when you feel like you need a voice. I did actually poll my students today, and I said, how many of you guys think that your vote matters legitimately? How many of you actually think that when you get to voting age, and I have a few that are, but when you get to voting age, it's going to make a difference? And that what you say can make a difference? And I had one student raise her hand. And that is terrifying to me, that they don't feel like, that even though we do live in a democratic republic, and we all understand that, they don't feel like their voice can be heard and they can make a difference. And so I wanted to model for them that we can make a difference, and we can talk to our representatives. And so you have this evening- And so you have this evening, a letter that I have given you that I know you didn't get time to read, I know you get inundated with things, but there are also two potential headlines that could go out on the Roaring Eagle, and this is something that the students are discussing. And before we even get there, I really want to thank those of you who have taken the time to interview with us or contact us to share that it was not a good time now, but perhaps in future you want to talk to us. For those of you who have not, we will be reaching out again for another opportunity if you'd like to talk to us. However, we have heard lots of things, and I have students who live in both District Two and District Three. But since this is primarily an issue that we have divided between District Two and District Three, and the bulk of our district lives in District Two, I wanted to present you with two potential headlines, and this is what you have in your short packet. And the first one says, York County Council hears the will of District Two. All right? That would be one potential headline. The second one is, York County Council ignores the will of District Two. Because overwhelmingly, we are hearing from everybody involved that District Two and District Three people support. Now, have I talked to every person in the district? No. Do I have more people to send my reporters to interview? Yes. However, this is an evolving story, and I just wanted to make you aware of what is the option for, the only local news media that Clover School District actually has. So thank you very much. I am obviously in favor of the full $21,000 impact fee if we could get there, but I appreciate the district trying to compromise at 15. And thank you again for your time and your dedication and giving us the opportunity to be an example for our future. Thank you.
I'm Kristin Clark, 5827 JW Ramsey Road. Just want to thank members of York County Council for permitting me and my voice to be heard on behalf of the residents of Clover, South Carolina. I am a 20-plus-year resident of Clover with four students in our exceptional school system, stemming from eight to 18. I have served on various PTOs throughout the years and was active in managing the intense student population growth in CSD classrooms. As a community deeply invested in our local schools, we are, we are aware of the influx that is straining our infrastructure and escalating costs far beyond the initial projections. To manage this responsibility, impact fees are essential under the growth pays for growth principle. There is no question we have missed out on critical impact fees in the past to absorb impending future costs that will no doubt hit us, the taxpayers, more aggressively. My concern is that we had an opportunity years ago to set the impact fees at a recommended $15,000, but instead was set arbitrarily at $4,000. That cost Clover taxpayers tens of millions of dollars. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. By not stepping forward as a preventative measure, we are bound to see overwhelming pressure on our community that we have worked so hard to preserve. I understand the opposition when it is sound and it is genuine. Council members, Clover's future hinges on stable taxes, thriving schools, and public resources. Fort Mill's ability to gain council support for higher impact fees has shown that successful path forward. I am speaking from a place of concern, compassion, and respect for everyone in this room. Please take a look at your neighbor, your school, and your community and make the best decision for the future of Clover. Thank you.
Very briefly, my name's Sarah Spruill. I'm from the law firm of Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd. The district asked me to speak very briefly, just as an initial frame of reference, get it straight in our heads. This is just the five-year look. This isn't a new fee. What the district has asked is at the five-year review stage, that the council adjusts the level of the fee to the maximum allowable amount from the 2020 study. There have been some questions through this process. Planning Commission has approved that request and has looked at the updated numbers that show that $15,000 figure is still supportable and in fact, cost of increase. So it would be a higher figure if a new study were done today. The district asked me in particular to comment on the issue of the stadium for Lake Wiley High School and, and very generally, if that's allowed. And the response is, yeah. You've got a planned development projects in both the 2020 fee study and the new study that includes this high school, Lake Wiley High School. And then you have what you can spend the funds on within those planned capacity projects. So you have the state statute that says you can spend them on capital improvements to public facilities, which are designed to provide service in the service area. And then you've got the York County ordinance with respect to these fees that say that we can spend them, the district can spend them for public education facilities as defined in the York County Code of Ordinances. And included in that definition of public education facilities, you've got associated playgrounds and recreational areas. So it's squarely included in what's in there. And that was the only, the only point the district asked me to reiterate for you, that the stadium is part of the high school, the high school is part of the capital improvement plan, always has been, no new ask there. Thank you.
Michael Pruner, 841 Hollis Lakes Road, President of Home Builder Association, York County. Thank you for your time again this evening. I'm tired of speaking. I know y'all are tired of hearing me speak, but I'm going to regress just a little bit because there's a lot of statements that have been made tonight about impact fee law that just aren't out there and just not true. So prior to 2016, impact fee law was not allowed to be used for schools. The law was changed in 2016. Fort Mill was grandfathered in because they had an impact fee before there was even an impact fee law according to schools of $2,500. It was read at council twice at $5,000 and then went to $18,000 as an exit to certain council members when they left council. $18,000 went through. Home Builder Association, State Association, the National Association of Home Builders stepped in with some other local builders and some national builders to get clarification on these laws. And yes, we did take it all the way to the State Supreme Court. There were decisions made, okay? You can call it a win, you can call it a loss, but the impact fee law that is on the books today was shaped by that litigation, what it can be spent on, what it can't be spent on. All those things were cleared up and defined because they're very vague. And then I'm glad the law firm came up this evening and spoke because I gave a presentation to the South Carolina Association of School Boards, and I was not going to mention that tonight because I didn't think it was fair to mention things, people weren't here, you know, from that. But the same law firm came to that. One of the biggest points they made in that entire discussion was that currently in South Carolina, they don't take the lifespan of the school in effect when they calculate an impact fee. And this very law firm set caution in school districts. And I asked one of the school board members, did y'all attend that presentation at the, at the, the state convention? And they said, yeah, we did. I said, well, what did you think about this right here where it says you got to consider the life? Because impact fee is saying that I need to build a seat for that child. That child's going to use that school for four years. We're lucky in high school, maybe five, get a victory lap. But if they use it four years and the lifespan of that school is 40 years, then that student has used one-tenth of that, not the full impact on that. One other parallel that's been drawn this evening that I think needs to be pointed out is the fairness between Fort Mill and Clover. Well, at the halfway point, when Fort Mill came back to this council, and maybe some of the members weren't here then, they had $700 million of new projects from when they did their first fee to the five-year point going forward. We are looking at the exact same projects from the original impact fee report in 2020. Okay? Not an apple-to-apple comparison, completely an apple-to-orange comparison. Couple of things I wanted to clear up before I put the presentation on the screen here. These were in your council packets on October 6th, but I wanted to highlight some things, so I made a copy of for each of you tonight. You should have received it. At the very last council meeting that we had here, the school district and school superintendent said no money was being spent on middle schools. No money was being asked for in the impact fee for middle schools. Don't consider the middle schools. We're not asking that. If you look at the letter dated June 25th, 2025, the letterhead up here says Superintendent of Schools. Go to the very last sentence on the back page that's signed by the Clover School District Board of Trustees and the superintendent. Construction costs related to new elementary, middle, and high schools have been consistently over budget, and these funds will allow us not to ask our taxpayers shoulder that burden. Which is it? Paying for the middle school, not paying for the middle school? Then on October 6th, put up on the presentation, I watched the meeting again, made you a copy. Total bill for the new high school, all the costs have really gone at $189,608,330. We learned at the last meeting of council two weeks ago, that's now 191 made. I've also included your bid list, so you can look at the actual bids for the projects in high schools. One last thing I'll say before I move into this very short presentation is that Paul S. Tischler wrote a document here for school boards about impact fees. And clearly said, impact fees may be voted in without an election. Usually only apply to new development that does not exist yet, people who are not there. They're perceived to exclude current taxpayers. Therefore, impact fees are a fairly painless and free revenue source since there's no obvious increase to current voters. But then he goes on to say that you need to educate the electorate because when you build more schools, there's more taxes regardless of impact fees. And to think that it is the silver bullet that was talked about earlier, it's, it's just not. So I've spent a lot of time since this process has started, I have given a lot of people a copy of the capital improvement plan. I was the person that forced the county to make that public. When it was not advertised that that was a public document, I insisted that it be made a public document, and it was. And anybody that wanted it could come to the county and get a copy of it. I've given out a little over 40 copies to people that have asked me for that study. So we can debate, and we can ask the Attorney General, can you buy buses? Can you not buy buses? You know, that's a topic of conversation. But if we go to, I need to learn how to operate this thing. In the CIP, Clover School District requests 21 buses for $3,404,590,000. That was the request in the CIP that was just sent to you in July. Presented to the Planning Commission in their questions and answers, it was eight buses. So the new bus cost $144,790, almost 1.1 million. Council was told at the last meeting, 11 buses. That's $1.5 million. Let's say Attorney General says, you can buy buses. Absolutely, you can buy buses. You can buy activity buses. Well, the CIP is faulted because it says they want to buy buses for 9,044 students. Is that growth paying for growth? No, that's buying buses for the whole district. That's not buying buses for the new students that are causing the growth. That's not making a seat for a student that is coming in and not already here. If you look at the CIP, and these numbers come directly from that, you take the 20, 24, 25 numbers and take them at 9,044 students, you go to 2030, when this impact fee study expires at the 10-year mark, it's 9,668 students. That's a total student increase of 824 students district-wide. Do the same math that they use in their CIP, their standard of service is .0023 buses per student. So 824 students times .0023 for their standard of service, 1.89 buses. Call it two buses. Two buses at 144,790, that's $289,580, not $3,040, right? One other thing that's not addressed in this, when I spoke to the Department of Education this week, last week actually, homeschool student jump in Clover School District. At the end of 2022, there were 225 reported students to the State Department of Education as homeschooled. There's 463 now. Are those included in what our projected growth is? Are those the students that, that are in that as well? Why is that not addressed in the CIP? Millage. I know I have a lot of haters when I talk about taxes, but the last meeting, it was said by the district, compare us to York, you know? When a mill is worth $168,000 across the entire tax base in York, and it's worth $497 in Clover. Well, on $200,000 house, a mill is a mill anywhere in York County. It is still 1/1,000 of a dollar, okay? What you get over your tax base. So Clover is at an advantage. What, what Clover School District didn't tell you at the last meeting was that for every mill they go up in Rock Hill, they get $741,000. In Fort Mill, $759,000. They also don't mention the taxes haven't really gone down in Fort Mill. Okay. Let's look at housing affordability. Since it's been ripped from the study and we don't have that in here, if you do an impact fee only on new construction, that's the only people that pay that. But if you take that 6% interest loan from the CIP, and they're saying the fee at $21,387, which they're asking for 15, not that, will be $142 a month. But speaking with the mortgage makers, it'd be $100 a month more on the payment, which like we said earlier, $180 a month on a rental. Increase the tax millage by 10 mills from 46 to 56 for debt service on a $200,000 home is $6.65 a month, $80 a year. Don't increase it 10 mills, Clover School District. Increase it five mills. And I want to say something that was brought up by Mr. Love, and something I really researched and looked at. It's a toolbox, you know? You have a reasonable impact fee. You have a reasonable tax structure, and you have reasonable bonds. And when all three of those are in balance, the funding should be there. But if you looked at adding 10 mills to the school debt and $80 a year on $200,000 house, that's $4.9 million a year. Raise it five mills, that's $2.5 million a year. Look at some of the reports. So we've been talking about how things have gotten a lot more expensive with the schools. I gave you the bid report there. Well, if you don't stay with the bid, then I don't know how prices go up once it's bid. I've never been successful in raising a price on somebody after I've signed a contract with them. So we'll assume that the bid's the bid. Well, you look at their report from September of 2023, it was clearly pointed out to them that with the building at 40% design, they were already 15 to 20% over budget and had to add alternatives, and that's what's on your bid sheet to determine what they can do and what they can't do. Fast forward to January 27th report, this is the first time a change order appears in the monthly reporting that they post on their school district website. They added $4,276,000 for a third floor and terrazzo tile in the café. Is it needed? I don't know. That's not my job to say. But to say construction costs have gone up, they've known what the costs were since the bids came in. They've decided to select things from that bid list, and now they want more money, and they've said more than once, if we just had the impact fee at $15,000 to begin with, we could have paid for all this. Why'd you take it as an option if you didn't have the money to pay for it? Thank you for your time this evening. Any other discussions?
Sheila Quinn, Superintendent for Clover School District, 931 Thorn Ridge Lane. I know it's a long night, and you've heard a lot. And thank you to each of you who've taken calls, emails, texts, conversations, many of them. I really and truly appreciate it. I just want to clear up a couple of things that get thrown around and cause you to have confusion. First of all, we do use the 45th day because between the summer and the, and Labor Day, we have a lot of kids who enroll. The 45th day is an official period that the state collects our enrollment data. It is the most accurate data before we have, as Ms. Cody said, 100 to 150 seniors graduate at Christmas. So that's why we use the 45th day. We are 607 kids greater than when we did, we did our first impact fee in 2020. So we are 607 kids up from then, and we use a 10-year projection, and we accounted for that projection in the study with a slightly lower number than we projected from the last time. So we've accounted for any loss that we had, but we are 607 students up. Secondly, I would like to say in terms of capacity, you probably don't remember this because it's been a while, but really where we were crunched for space was in middle school. Oak Ridge Middle School and Clover Middle School were reaching capacity. We had a ninth-grade camp- We had a ninth-grade campus that used to be a middle school. So we said, instead of building a middle school, let's build the high school, and we would have to take our nine through twelve students and move them to the high school. If we didn't build a new high school, Clover High School itself, the main building, only holds twenty-three hundred students. We have twenty-eight hundred students today. So we had to build something. So we didn't build a middle school, we just added on to the one we have as our ninth-grade campus, and we're building this high school. And we bid it out in estimates, or in parts, or in alternates, as the speaker just said, because we knew with construction prices, when we were going to bid, the cost, the bid was going to be so high, we couldn't award it. So we bid it, and we said, "Hey, we got to build the third floor in order to have twenty-one hundred students, but let's just shell it out, and then if we can afford to put the classrooms in, actually finish it, let's finish it, because we're going to have to come up with that money soon, because you've got to have the third floor finished." We were always going to build the third floor. We were at first saying, if we can't get it, the bid under, we've got to at least shell it out, and then we added it when we could. So we've tried to do, and we've done that with no new tax money. But we have tried to be very, very diligent in how we've planned for that, but we had to bid it out that way. The next thing I wanted to talk about was this report. There's been allegations that we haven't spent impact fees properly. We've spent all of our impact fees, all six million of them, on the Lake Wiley High School and Liberty Hill Elementary School. We've turned all of those invoices in, and my understanding is that your planning department will be doing a report for you in March, as is normal, and you will see all of those reports. So we've hidden nothing, we've turned in everything, and we've done everything with due diligence. And last but not least, about vehicles. This is what I read from your ordinance on vehicles. I'm trying to find my sheet now, probably won't be able to find it. Oh, here it is. Systems improvements, all right, so fees may be used for public education facilities to address growth, including, and this is the fourth bullet, system improvements, including site preparation, building expansion, and vehicles. That's why in twenty-twenty, we had the impact fee included buses, and that is why we continued that, because with adding an elementary, a middle, and a high, we're going to need activity buses to service those schools. So I just wanted to clear up some of those things that I heard tonight, and again, thank you all very, very much for your hard work. We really appreciate you.
Are we, we've had a lot of folks. If there's something new, we'd love to hear from you.
I'll try to be as new as I can, I assure you. Matt Burris, twenty-two, twenty-one Sussex Road in York is my address. I will tell you all tonight, I've been up here before and spoken to you, and really appreciate the effort that you guys have put into this. I know this is not fun for anybody on this side or your side, so we appreciate that. I'm a proud Clover native, graduate of the Clover School District, a resident homeowner, taxpayer, and currently an at-large member of the Clover School District Board of Trustees. I'm proud to tell you that I serve on this board with six other dedicated members of our community, who are also either natives or decades-long residents of Clover. Six of the seven of us graduated from Clover High School, and the seventh has taught in the Clover School District for decades. We've seen a lot of change in our tight-knit community, and I think it's fair to say we have a pretty good idea where our constituents stand. As someone who grew up in town in Clover, later moved to the eastern side of the district over towards Lake Wiley as an adult, the changes that we have seen are astonishing. The influx of new residents from every state in the Union has brought growth that most of us could have never imagined even twenty years ago. That growth itself is not any one individual's fault, but there are a variety of socioeconomic and cultural variables to consider. But one thing that has been constant in all of that change is the performance and standard of the Clover School District. Throughout my life, and for much longer, CSD has produced educated, knowledgeable, high-performing citizens of this state and the world at large, and it's our mission to continue that in the future. If you ask all these folks that are moving here, some of them are here with us tonight, from out of state, why they chose the Clover area, the vast majority of them, very quickly, will tell you because of the Clover School District. CSD has always benefited, and that is not an accident, CSD's always benefited from forward-thinking, proactive, and dedicated leadership. Our request and diligence in asking for these fees has been another step in that direction. The reputation of CSD speaks for itself. We ask that you help us continue to meet that standard. I will tell you briefly, in my professional life, I'm a commercial insurance agent here in York County. I work with and talk with York County business owners every single day. The impact of Act three eighty-eight, which has been discussed a little bit tonight, is significant. I hear about it frequently. We ask that these business owners in York County shoulder a large burden in light of this act, and it's something that I think we all need to consider. As recently as earlier this year, this council has openly discussed the benefit of impact fees in offsetting some of that three eighty-eight burden. I would ask you, is this not the case in Clover? The case in Fort Mill, it should be the case in Clover as well. These economic impacts do not change when you drive across the Buster Boyd Bridge. As an elected member of a body in this county, I can relate to the tough decisions that you have to make. Despite all of our efforts, there will be tough decisions, there will be divisive decisions, and we have to make those in Clover as well. I don't envy you, just as I don't get any phone calls telling me that people envy me when we have to make a decision like that. In closing, I'll leave you with this. Last year, I had the opportunity to help organize and attend my Clover High School twentieth anniversary class reunion. That seems like a long time to me. To some of you, it's probably not, not quite as long, but we all had a wonderful time catching up. We were able to tour the very, very expanded Clover High School that we once attended. A lot of folks commented that it was almost unrecognizable. We had classmates from all over the country and the world, we had medical doctors, PhDs in other fields, military officers, and just about anything else you can imagine in that class of two thousand and four. I'm very proud of that, but what I'm equally proud of, if not more so, are my classmates who have made their various successes in life with their families and careers, and chosen to stay right here in town in Clover. These are, just as importantly, the products and successes of the Clover School District. As you can imagine, at the reunion, a lot of the conversations centered around the amount of change that's occurred in just the last twenty years. Our classmates that don't come back often, or maybe haven't been back at all, were in awe. They didn't recognize their hometown anymore. All of these are realities that the leadership in these school districts experiencing this growth have to face. We didn't ask for it, but we're tasked with coming up with a solution. And we, the folks that live and breathe this district every day, have thoughtfully developed a solution that will help us, our students, and our residents. Unfortunately for you, you're the body that's responsible for approving that, not the school board in Clover. If it were up to us, these impact fees would already be implemented, and we're very comfortable living with that consequence when any of us are up for reelection. I know that you guys have heard from us a little more than you wanted to in the last six months. I assure you, we like all of you, but the feeling is mutual. Since before I was on the Clover School Board, the most frequently discussed issue amongst our constituents has and continues to be impact fees. I don't think this is a coincidence. The vast majority of residents in the Clover School District want to be treated fairly, and they want the full impact fee amounts. They feel that they should have gotten it five years ago, and they have the opportunity to correct that mistake now. The Clover School Board agrees with that sentiment. We ask that you provide our constituents with that full fee. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Kieran Meeks, eight hundred Settlement Street, Clover. I'm also a member of the Clover School Board of Trustees. I won't be before you long, I'll keep it real brief. Just first, I'd like to say, thank you, guys. We understand the weight on your shoulders in making this decision. You know, from an elected official, we've had to make some decisions like that as well. So I just want to say thank you again for the due diligence that you guys are doing. I feel like the process is working. We all, we asked for an impact fee, you guys came back with additional questions over and over again. In my opinion, that's the way the process is supposed to work. And so we appreciate you guys for doing your due diligence and asking the questions that you needed to hear clarity on, so that you can make an educated decision. So we really appreciate that, from one elected official to another. And then, and then again, to keep it brief, the last thing I just want to say is, along with asking those questions and receiving additional information and responses from the district, from the home builders, or whoever you're asking questions to, the legal counsel, along with asking those questions and receiving that feedback, the second part of that is being able to change your decision, or change your mind when presented with new information. And so that's all we're asking you guys to do. We've given you all answers to everything over and over again, and we don't mind continuing to do that, to do that. As long as you still have questions, we still have answers. Now, the answers probably won't change, but we'll still provide you with the answers, and we respect you all for answering, asking those questions. And so I just want to say again, thank you for that, and we look forward to you all approving what we're asking for, for these impact fees, so we can continue to be the great district that we are in Clover. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have been going with this public hearing for an hour and a half, and I definitely respect, and folks, it's funny, when you're the chair, folks try to read into anything that you say, you know, as me trying to run a meeting. Don't assume that you know what I think about this issue and what I'm going to do, but I do need to run the meeting and ensure that the public hearing, that we hear from our folks, and that hopefully we get new information that we haven't already heard yet. Yes, ma'am?
All right. My name is Amanda Hoosier. I live in the Kings Grove neighborhood, off of two seventy-four. So thank you all for the time to speak. I know that some of y'all are tired of listening to your constituents, and then you'd like to move this meeting along. So I'll try to keep this short and provide information that I don't think that y'all have heard. So number one, if councils supported this impact fee like they did Fort Mill, this meeting would not be this long. But when people get ignored, they get loud, and they speak up, and they speak out, and then you have an hour and a half of people asking for what they've been asking for since twenty-twenty. So the Executive Director of the Home Builders Association mentioned that the numbers have gone down, and that you can't base the impact fee on that, but I guess he isn't aware of all of the homes that are being built, and that will increase the numbers. Capacity must also include homeschool students, and we were shown on a slide that there are four hundred and sixty-three homeschool students. And per South Carolina Code fifty-nine, sixty-three, one hundred, homeschool students may not be denied by a school district the opportunity to participate in interscholastic activities. If the student meets all the district's eligibility, lives within the district, and notifies the superintendent of the intent, those students must be included in those numbers as well. And then lastly, I'm just going to say, did I look at this a lot like when I bought my house in Lake Wiley? I bought in a new neighborhood, and I had to pay a capital fee towards the homeowners' association. And that fee is used so that I pay my part to ensure that the neighborhood is funded enough to thrive, and an impact fee is no different. It is asking for the people that are coming in, the new ones, to pay their portion to ensure that the school district thrives. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Robin Freeman, and I live at twenty-fifty-five Tiger Paul Lane. My kids went to Clover Schools, and I am a mortgage loan officer. And my concern here is that as far as the new builds, some of these homes are exempt from this impact fee. Now, do I think that there needs to be funding for the schools and the new people coming in? Yes, but I also have a lot of customers that I have pre-approved that are from Clover that cannot afford housing, period. I mean, as far as affordable housing. And then, when we go building, I mean, there's a lot of houses already coming up, like at Daimler, I don't know what it's called now, but where they changed the name of the road. But of those houses coming in, I mean, yes, there's, if you put the max fee on that, that is going to increase the, the house prices everywhere, not just new construction. It's going to increase the apartment cost. It's going to increase prices all across the board, existing homes, people going to, you know, not just new construction. So my concern is just affordable housing, because this impact fee at full amount, and especially if, you know, if we're really, well, yes, the schools need to have money. I agree. But again, it's not just the new people. These are people that have lived here that need bigger houses. Their families are growing. So in thinking about a full impact fee that's going to increase prices for all houses, not just new construction, because it will affect them all, then we need to keep those people in mind, too. That's my point. So thank you.
All right.
Got children, one, three, four, nine, Filbert Highway in York. I'm just here, y'all know I'm Chair of the School Board in York. So there were some questions, I want to make sure for the record, for the York, all or nothing. We, as a board, chose all or nothing. Clover has not done that. Clover actually reduced their fee on their own, and that's how they come to you tonight. So I just want to state, because there was a lot of questions about that, when we came to y'all as a board, we did come to you as all or nothing, because we had a reason for that. We had a reason for that with our bond, and it has nothing to do with Clover. So I want to make sure those are two totally separate issues, because that is not what they've come before you for this, for this impact fee. So I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Celia Burton, eleven Weatherly Way, Clover. I'm also a senior at Clover High School, and my graduating class, the class of twenty-twenty-six, has over six hundred people. Now that will go down to slightly less than six hundred once the winter grads, the over one hundred winter grads graduate in December, but that's still a lot. And I heard someone mention previously that those classrooms are full, or not full. That's not true. We have three campuses, the ninth-grade campus, the CCI building, for people who are interested in pursuing automotive, technological careers, actual careers without going to college, and we also have the main campus. And yet, I am still in classrooms that hold twenty-five desks with twenty-five students. And that is the same for that teacher, for all three of her periods, for all three of her periods next semester, and the classrooms are full. So I just wanted to let you all know that. Thank you.
All right.
Julie Ferraro, I am living Vander Lakes in York. Just want to make a point that I am not against the impact fees at all. I believe that there needs to be some payment for the schools, but I'm very afraid that people don't understand that the impact fee is only for the schools and not for infrastructure, and that is probably the biggest thing. And also, the mantra of growth pays for growth, not necessarily true, because if you say I own a home, I don't have any children. Now, my children went to Clover Schools, and absolutely was one of the reasons I moved here. Loved, loved them. Teachers are wonderful. But if I own a home, I don't have children anymore, and I sell my home, and somebody moves here, they have five children. They're causing a big impact, yet they're not paying any kind of a fee. So how is that relative to all the home builders who are building, who, by the way, are also getting incentives to build on these properties? They're not paying per home necessarily, and you've got a lot that are getting exemptions, like the ones on Daimler, that aren't paying any impact fee at all, which I don't know how that happened. But so saying growth pays for growth is really not an accurate statement, because it really is not. Because growth, as a real estate agent, I see people moving here with a lot of children. My suggestion would be to, potentially to make it more fair, is to increase the deed stamps, or increase something to that nature, where the home buyer is adding another fee to their purchase price, not necessarily fifteen thousand dollars, seven thousand, whatever that fee might be, just to make it fair for every person that's moving here. Not many people are buying new homes, and I will tell you that a lot of these new home constructions are having a very difficult time. They're fire selling a lot of their homes, because they can't sell them, because it's not, because of the cost of everything. So to add to that, another fee, well, the ones that are already being built are not getting the fee, they're all exempt. And I would like to know what the builders, what the incentives the builders are getting to build, and the thousands and thousands of homes that are being built that aren't paying an impact fee, and they're going to have a tremendous impact on our school system. So something really should be done to make it fair for everyone. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion for executive session? If not, I'd like to take a break to go to the restroom.
A motion that we go to executive session to receive legal advice.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go straight into it. We'll go straight into executive session.
Testing, all right, there we go. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve second reading, restoring the fee to the full amount before the council as amended by the capital improvement plan so that the urban service boundary line sets the geographical region within Clover School District within which the impact fee may be imposed, subject to the receipt of the analysis from Tesler Bice Consulting regarding any effect in the urban service boundary line has on the diddled it as on the impact fee calculation currently before the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One, just one quick, I don't listen to my discussion, but can we get what the full approval amount is?
Can you define the amount?
Just so that it's clear to everybody.
Just for clarity, the motion, as I understood it, was to restore the impact fee to the full amount, which was fifteen thousand.
Thirty-five.
Within the USB designation as it short circuited.
Along with the corresponding multifamily and manufactured home prices of seven thousand four thirty and nine thousand eight forty-two.
All right. Do we have any discussion?
Call for a vote?
Yep.
I think, yep, do you want to say something?
Oh, yeah. This is the closest way that I can see, believe me, we've done deliberate and deliberative, where anything would come close to actually putting the impact where the impact is. Everybody keeps saying there is no difference between what Fort Mill and Clover is. I've been here my whole life, there is a big difference. But I also can remember when Fort Mill was no bigger than York, and I urged the people in Clover to realize if they keep selling their property or whether they don't sell it, that's up to them. But I just hope that they're not headed into being the next Fort Mill of York County. And that's my feelings, my sentiment. They may not agree with me, but I did compromise to the point, because I'm not going to doubt that something ain't needed, but we need to spend a lot of time and effort to fix this problem at the state, because if not, we're going to be sitting right back in here with the same problem, because nothing is getting fixed. And I made the statement when we talked about Fort Mill, which, by the way, for all y'all that think that I was part of Fort Mill and I voted for it, I didn't. It's on public record, there's a lot of things that's been lied about, misconception, half-truths told on people, which, for the life of me, I don't know why anybody would belittle or whatnot the people that have to make the choice. And we got all the evidence, all the stuff in front of us that none of y'all had, and we were doing the best that we could at it. And as far as those who are concerned, threatening with who ain't going to be elected, who will, I personally can tell you this, I was Tommy when I got here, I'll be Tommy when I leave. That's all I got to say.
Any other discussion?
Yep.
Mr. Roddy.
I'd just like to say, there's a thousand pros and a thousand cons that have been spoken in front of us over the last five, six weeks. There are points on the left, there's points on the right, there's points in the middle. For the life of me, I know Tommy and I have talked probably more during this impact fee than we've talked since he's been on council, because it is troublesome to get emails, to get publicly criticized for doing due diligence and having our opinion one way or another. And, yeah, the emails got ugly, the public rhetoric got ugly, half-truths being told in this chamber, half-truths being told outside this chamber, whether it was personally, on social media, mocking people, you know, for the life of me, I've been here 14 years, and I'll say outside of the Panther situation, this has been probably the worst, right behind the Panthers, that the public rhetoric has gotten so heated and tense, and we all still live here. Nobody's moving out because of this, nobody's moving in because of this. I want to clear up a point that's been thrown out several times over the last couple of weeks, that I said Clover don't pay enough in taxes. That's the biggest lie, that's farthest from the truth that's been said. I had staff go back and look, it's about five minutes and 30 seconds. I said what I said, that Clover paid the least amount in debt service millage. I have the screenshot to put up on the screen if you're ready to put it up. That's That shows, and it's been up on the screen several times, that Clover pays the least amount in debt service mileage. I didn't say they paid the lowest amount in taxes, but you can clearly see from the charts, and this is what I was speaking on. But you get people come in this chamber, twist the truth, go on social media, twist the truth. We even had someone stand here and lie blatantly to us that they paid an impact fee on a home. Staff looked it up, we do fact check, because we take it serious. The individual didn't pay an impact fee, said he would be more than happy to have paid the additional eleven thousand when they hadn't even paid the first four thousand. That's the kind of information we have to disseminate through, for, or against. And we, everybody's passionate about what they do, what they stand for, but be honest when you're standing in front of us, because we're going to check it out. Not everybody stands here and tells the truth, not everybody's honorable. But I'd challenge anybody, because I'll meet this online, go back and pull the video, post it on Facebook like we've done everything else, with bump Roddy saying Clover doesn't pay enough in taxes. If I said that, put it on social media. I haven't seen it yet, and we've been doing this for five, six weeks. If I said it that way, put it on social media, because we can pull the clip. They went back and reviewed it, I did not say that. So don't try to use those underhanded tactics to get us to try to change our mind or force us about whether we're going to get reelected. We got somebody unseated, we can do it again. Because I can tell you, that man's sitting on the end down there, he's fought long and hard, and he cares about this issue more than probably anybody can imagine. We've talked, we've talked. So let's don't divide this community over someone's opinion. If we're going to be divided, let's be divided over the facts, not the opinions, because we all got one, we all got one.
Any other discussion?
Just one other thing.
We've done one time.
Watch your words very carefully when you call somebody a fool. Because there's a bigger book than any of this paperwork and all we got here that stresses what that leads to, so.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so first of all, you know, again, as you guys, everybody knows, this is state law, we have to follow state law through the process here, we have to understand, that's why there's a lot of questions asked. You know, when Fort Mill had come back before, Fort Mill had been denied also from paying debt ser- impact fees toward debt services, and they were stopped, okay? Because there was an impact on state law. So when we go through this, again, we're scrutinized by what state law says, so we have to follow that. So it's really important as we go through the process, we talk amongst each other, but we also have to understand each and how, and how these funds are going to be paid for, and again, debt service, you know, impact fees can't be paid towards debt services. That is critical, and we got to make sure from a council perspective that our answers, because we could come back and be impacted by making the wrong decision upfront on these things. So again, I do want to share that, you know, we've taken a lot of time together to talk through this and again, come up with this decision that we're making tonight, so I do want to share that.
Any other discussion?
I just want to thank everybody that has sent the support emails, everybody that showed up here tonight, you know, this is what government is about. It's about the people having a voice and being able to make sure that what the majority wants gets accomplished. And I want to thank all of these council members up here that have worked hard on coming together to get something done and come to some sort of an agreement, and while it's not what every one of us wants, you know, this is how government should work, should work with compromise, as long as you're not compromising your absolute principles or morals or something along those lines, you know, legalities, but you know, this is what we should expect out of all of our government, from everywhere, from local to the federal level, to be able to work together and to be able to listen to the people. And I just want to thank all of you, everybody up here and everybody out there that's done this.
This motion's a great step forward for the citizens of Clover and for the Clover School District.
I support the motion, I still do not believe that Daimler should be exempted from this, I think that I want to direct that Leo take a look at that further and to provide additional information back to council. That, I don't believe council should be bound by something that happened in 2008 that none of us were here to deal with, I don't think it's fair. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move now to Old Business, rezoning action, consider third reading, case number twenty-five dash seventeen, tax map number four nine eight zero 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 two three four five nine eleven twelve thirty-seven sixty seventy-four seventy-five. To rezone from R U D G C and P D to P D and G C, ninety-seven acres in District Three. I'm just, I'm going to give just a minute, let folks make their way out. Do we have anything for management on this one at all, before we have a motion?
Yes, Assistant Manager Tom Cows, would like to share just a little bit about the amendments that are listed in the executive summary.
Yes, thank you, Mr. County Manager. In the executive summary, it offers the amendments that the Planning Commission made, but it also offers amendments that the, that Rice Partners has proffered for consideration. And respecting both council's discretion and the developers' request, I would probably recommend in the future that we try not to negotiate substantive changes while you're at the dais. I think the staff in the Planning Commission have already had consultations with the developer during the application period, and of course, staff in the Planning Commission made extensive reviews and recommendations. Bypassing our established processes at this stage can, or has, the potential to lead to a lot of confusion. I know that we've given you, Council, a number of follow-up reports, the Planning Staff has revised the case report, but I've also advised staff that in the future, we should caution ourselves and encourage the developers to raise their requests for changes or accommodations way before the first reading. Or you would have the alternative of first reading perhaps, to send it back to the Planning Commission. But whatever you decide tonight, we want to be sure that, you know, you're clear on the proposed amendments, and if you are, then we would recommend proceeding with a motion.
We have a motion?
Yep, let's see. I move to approve the third reading of the following amendments on the Newport Commons Plan Development Code. One, minimum side setbacks between the end-of-town home units and sublots shall be zero, and instead, townhomes shall have a minimum of twenty-foot building separations. Two, designated on-street parking spaces as provided through curb extensions or similar design features may be utilized to satisfy the guest parking requirements for the townhomes. Three, the amended stormwater pond behind the anchor tendon shall be considered one of the four amenities of Pod One. And four, the perimeter buffer yard along the exterior boundaries of Pod Two shall be fifty feet in depth and include a six-foot aqua element limit the disturbance during the development and may encroach thirty feet into the fifty-foot buffer yard, but any encroachment must be replanted at a density of sixteen trees and forty-eight shrubs per hundred linear feet prior to the final plat improvement. And last words I'd like to say, is I don't know how a squirrel is going to be able to pass the road on one sixty-one, and I hope that we soon do something about these high-density developments that were approved before the majority of us were even on this council, and then we can't do anything about it.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a quick question, how many, you say sixty-eight trees, and how many shrubs per one hundred?
Sixteen trees.
Oh sixteen, I thought you said sixty-eight.
Forty-eight shrubs.
Okay. Okay.
Twenty bales of hay.
I mean a blaze of grass. Gotcha.
Is that buffer for the whole entire, all the way around the property, or where?
It, it will be, what's that, it'd be the encroaching on the neighbors toward the backside of the property. So you're still going to have Adnan Church Road and one sixty-one, the commercial side, but it'd be the loop around.
So, so when you do, when we're looking at that twenty-foot buffer, are we looking at it based on the number, and also layering it with trees?
Fifty foot.
Fifty, fifty, or fifty-foot buffer with trees buffered and/or existing trees left in place?
Yeah, less disturbance as possible, but whatever they do disturb, it's got to be put.
Yeah, okay.
In other words, we want a wooden wall forest.
And that, that number, it came from, is that part of our buffer requirements now for landscaping?
Is Jonathan, Jonathan, you want to elaborate on that? Plan C or something, I think you told me any or something.
Yes, that level of planting is consistent with our type C buffer yard, that's a fifty, based on a fifty-foot depth, that's where that number came from.
So that just brings it to current zoning?
It would be equivalent to a normal fifty-foot type C buffer yard.
Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing on, motion carries. Now to item number two of Old Business, council to consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement via and between York County, South Carolina, the county, and the company identified for the time being as project sample, acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project investors collectively the company, to provide for certain infrastructure credits in connection with the establishment and/or expansion of the certain facilities in the county collectively the project, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park and certain infrastructure credits to be made available to the company and the project and other matters related thereto.
You want a motion or a presentation from staff?
My understanding is that a request was made by the company to request, to provide information.
Our Economic Development Director Mitch Miller's here to share a presentation, we'll answer questions as we go.
Great, thank you.
Council, thank you for the opportunity to present, I know it's a lengthy discussion tonight, and my intent here is to give the information and be as concise as I can, but also answer any questions you may have. Also want to let you know the company is in attendance, they're willing to also address any questions you may have, if they're any directed to them, and also traffic engineers as well, so, thank you, and I'll quickly go through this, but please feel free to stop and ask questions along the way. So, in terms of who the company is, I think it's very clear with them being on the screen, but I think it's important considering how this has played out in the public, that we become very transparent with this process, so this community knows who's considering York County, it is Costco Wholesale, and they are considering a site in Rock Hill off of Porter Road, roughly about a hundred and sixty-eight acres, you can see an aerial there. The site borders the interstate and essentially would be accessible through Interconnect Drive, which is directly off of Porter Road. A little bit about Costco, they are a membership club warehouse, if you are aware of that. The more specific thing that I want to point to here is that this site would essentially service roughly about twenty stores, mostly in South Carolina and North Carolina and a small portion of Georgia, and really help as they look to grow that footprint in the Carolinas and this be a key part of their service territory. So, what they're looking at with this site, it is very strategically located to where they currently have stores, where they anticipate growth being in major markets, the access to seventy-seven is something that is extremely important to them as well, and strong proximity to the Port of Charleston. I don't know in terms of, and I'm sure they could speak to it, but I do believe day one, they would be one of the larger users at the Port of Charleston, once they come in. The site was zoned for industrial, essentially development agreements, permits, warehouse for warehouse industries who are already by right on that site, so it wasn't anything that they would have to go through a zoning process, which made it advantageous for them to consider this site as well, if they wanted to. A little bit about the job numbers, roughly they look to build this out in two phases. Really, the first phase, which I will consider here, you're really through year five, would put them, and I'll touch base on these numbers separately, but year one, they're going to add in about a hundred and twenty-five positions, that breakdown gives an hour, average hourly wage of about twenty-eight, a little over twenty-eight dollars. That wage rate is a little higher because you're going to have managerial positions that are going to come in first, to basically start the warehouse, get everything up in operations, and as they expand into year five, it'll be more of the operational labor, so you see that number go down slightly. But in total, a hundred and sixty-five positions with an average hourly wage of twenty-six sixty-six, and what that equates to in wages and benefits is roughly about fifteen million dollars. I will say this company offers great benefits in comparison to what a lot of other companies are going to offer, and speaks, quite honestly, speaks volumes whenever I've been able to opportunity to access some of their staff at their depot facility in Atlanta as well, so they do take care of their people. A little bit more site-specific, this is phase one, what you're looking at is a build-out of around five hundred and forty-one thousand square feet. Essentially, it would be a linear building, and it would have several different roads, which I'll get to, giving access into the site. And then phase two with expansion adds two more sides to it, going vertical, as they've described in executive session and conversations, looks like a field goal post, but that would allow for full build-out. That probably is going to be projected twenty, thirty-six as a timeframe, and that puts them just under nine hundred thousand square feet total. I'm not going to play the site animation, I don't think it's going to work on here, I think it had to be actually on the computer, so I can't show the drive-through, but there are going to be improvements, the beautification to the interchange leading into the site, but I can get this to you if you need that and want to consider that as well to see the actual drive-through. Oh, there it goes, apologize. This is coming off of the interstate headed towards Porter Road. And this would be turning right onto Porter Road. Roughly, you're looking at about a six-hundred-foot stretch before you hit a roundabout that would be constructed, allowing for flow of traffic to either turn into XL, which is existing out there today, continue on Porter Road, or head directly into the site on Interconnect Drive. And as you come into the site, that's really where the trucks get off of the main thoroughfare of Porter Road, everything is pretty well contained on Interconnect that leads right into their truck check-in station. This is that check-in station, essentially where trucks start to come in, in your own Costco property. As you come into the site, As you come into the site, um, you'll see the check-in, checkout, you'll see where they unload, on the backside they load for trucks to ship out. Essentially, they also have, um, docking stations. I don't know the exact term that they reference. I know, um, the company could speak to that directly, but they wanna make sure they keep trucks off of the public road, have the ability to put them in a bullpen area to, uh, prevent from trucks stacking on any type of, um, public thoroughfare, and have everything contained within their site. The additional buildings you see on there, that's part of a separate development. Those are all conceptual. Um, a group called Chiquita Capital owns that site. The big building that you see with the red stripe, though, that is the Costco building, what it would look like.
The image on this thing, again, just to reiterate, these other buildings you're showing are just conceptual.
They are. Um, and, and I'll touch on some of that, but they are conceptual.
Yeah.
I can't guarantee when, what, when that comes in, but it's to give perspective of what a full build-out could look like over a period of time frame that might be.
Outside of Costco's, right.
Correct.
That information was, this, this animation, who, who provided the animation?
The Costco. They provided that at, um, the last executive council, uh, session, sorry. Um, this is probably a more, um, easier map to read, just again, everything that we just saw basically shows where the roundabout would be, the extensions to Interconnect, where the, uh, entry point would be into Costco. As part of that construction, uh, they'll be doing that roundabout that I mentioned. Uh, today on the left is what it looks like, uh, at build-out is what it would look like on the right. Uh, again, to allow for better flow of trucks and cars coming in and out of that area, have better access going into the site. There'll also be improvements to Oak Pond and Porter Road with an additional turn lane at Oak Pond, just to again, allow better flow of traffic. Um, as it stands for Oak Pond, my understanding is that that will not be used for Costco trucks. Um, their primary entry point and exit point will be on Interconnect Road. Again, showing the flow of traffic with the roundabout, um, this probably is the more important side to really look at. Uh, I know that a lot of questions have come up with daily traffic volumes. You can see the existing roadway peak hours are highlighted there in yellow. Costco expects their peak hours really to be within that four to five timeframe, AM timeframe, and then really looking at that two to three-ish timeframe. Um, so they're trying to get ahead of both the morning traffic and the evening traffic, and this really is a breakdown as you look in red, the trucks per hour. Um, their highest that you see on there obviously is about one PM, uh, where it's expected to be about, I guess, I'm gonna have two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty trucks, but this at least gives a breakdown of what traffic will look like throughout the day.
Just, this, this information is, you're saying there's twenty-seven eighty, two thousand seven hundred and eighty truck trips?
I'll get to that number on the next slide.
I guess, but that's based on that, isn't it? That's where these numbers are coming from.
Yeah, they're, they're trying to break down those numbers throughout the day to give a guess, and that of when they expect trucks will be entering that site. Um, I've got a breakdown here, probably in more detail, that will speak to that, and it's a little easier to read instead of doing the math. Phase one, that five hundred and forty-one thousand square feet, that's just a linear building, uh, the anticipation is about two hundred and forty-four cars, seven hundred and fifty-one trucks. I know that there's been some questions about trucks versus trips. The best way I can describe it is simply this, one truck accounts for two trips, like you all coming to a council meeting tonight, you drive your car here, you drive your car home. The same holds true with someone coming into work or a truck coming in to drop off typically is going to leave with another delivery to head out to, service the retail location. So, two hundred and forty-four cars, you double that for trips, seven hundred and fifty-one trucks, you can double that for trips.
Yeah, I think that's one of the biggest points to point out, right? Because there's, I think I'm misconception about the actual number of trucks, you know, and even listening, we're hearing some comments tonight, you know, the number of trucks is minimal compared to what they spoke about, so again, I think it's really important that this is emphasized.
Looking at phase two.
Well, before we move on, just so I'm clear, so, just so for perspective, and I do think that it's important, I think this is great to educate the community and to do it directly from the county. I think that needs to happen, but what I wanna be clear on is that what you're saying in it, phase one, is, is fifteen hundred truck trips, and that's how they measure the warehouse and distribution, is that right?
That would be correct. You could take that seven fifty and multiply by.
Right, so like, for instance, for purpose of scale, um, the other warehouse and distributions and their specifics, I'm not gonna call them out, but the, the, the ones in, in the county currently that do this, the most that you see is a hundred and fifty truck trips a day, or maybe a hundred and ninety truck trips a day. So even at phase one, this is gonna be fifteen hundred truck trips a day, is that right?
There, there definitely is a, a difference, um, and I appreciate you not calling that company by name, um, but.
I just don't, I just think it's important as we educate that we are, have that scale of reference. With phase two, that twelve hundred and forty-seven truck is actually, we, they measure that in truck trips, so that's gonna be twenty-seven eighty, two thousand seventy, seven hundred and eighty truck trips a day.
Phase two.
By twenty thirty-six.
Phase two would be just the same.
It would be, take the cars and multiply it, you could take the trucks and multiply it
for the trips. Um, essentially, those are the numbers. Again, timing and everything on that, uh, really looking at phase two, probably in that twenty thirty-six timeframe, but it allows for scale. I can tell you, those numbers will fluctuate every year. You're, I don't think you're going to see immediately, you know, twelve hundred and forty-seven trucks. It's gonna take time to build up to do that.
So, I guess what I was wanting to know, though, with the, um, go ahead if you wanna ask.
Yeah, real quickly, so for clarification purposes, the business that we're not gonna mention that's been mentioned, do they have fifteen hundred cars coming in a day and fifteen hundred leaving, or do they have three thousand cars coming in a day and six thousand, uh, trips a day?
Sure, that's, that's a great question as well.
Do you know the answer to that question?
Um, have roughly thirty-five hundred employees between two locations.
So they have seven thousand trips a day?
They're one of the largest.
Excluding trucks?
They are one of the largest employers in the county. Um, they do have, uh, roughly thirty-five hundred employees. I don't know what the breakdown is in terms of what their work schedule is.
So.
But that, that could give the car comparison, but the truck comparison is greater.
So, in phase one, the representation has been made that there's gonna be a hundred and twenty-five jobs that'll be available for someone in the county to get, is that correct?
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty-five. But we're talking about, uh, a thousand vehicles that are gonna be coming in that phase one. So of the, the thousand people, only a hundred and twenty-five of them are gonna potentially be people that can be employed here. That's, that's the job creation. They're gonna be coming from somewhere else. Do we ever get an answer on like, who, are those contracted employees who drive trucks? But that's the difference, right? Cause the employees, um, at these other warehouse and distributions, they hired locally, right?
Phase one would be one sixty-five. Um, that, that accounts for that first five years of employment growth, so that's at a hundred and sixty-five. Year one is a hundred and twenty-five. But looking at that number, I may lean in more in on the company to address that, uh, they could probably speak to their hiring better than I could on that side.
But I mean, if we're talking about, here, we're gonna have a thousand cars, trucks, phase one, and only a hundred and twenty-five jobs?
Phase one, it's a hundred and sixty-five jobs, year one, it's a hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, a hundred and sixty-five.
That's correct.
Well, you know, looking though at this design, and, and I know we had a lot of conversations around when we first started talking about the entranceway and going into that facility, and how can we transition this thing, and, and again, and I applaud Costco's for what they've done here, is putting that roundabout and the work that we came with a concern and they, they addressed it. That's a big deal, and the other, the other thing too is that when you look at the, the area, the trucks are self-contained within that area, right? They're not rolling out into a different road. You have parking spaces, you've got everything self-contained within one location, so again, I had concerns right on the upfront, but putting that roundabout in, be able to identify, keep all the truck activity right there, it's unique. I mean, it's very unique. I mean, other warehouses don't have this, where this is something that was designed specifically for containment and control. I think that's a big deal. I just wanna point that out.
I think it's probably good to point out at this moment, too. I know there's been several questions tied to county roads and, um, the amount of time spent on county roads versus the interstate. Roughly, when you exit going northbound, you will be on Porter Road for about six hundred feet, so that is the distance to get to the roundabout and hit Interconnect Drive. When you're looking at the southbound ramp, when, uh, the trucks or cars leave, uh, to get back on the Interstate seventy-seven, it's about two thousand five hundred and eighty feet. The northbound ramp off of Interconnect is about two hundred and twenty-one feet, so that gives perspective of distance. I just, I wanna make that point clear, cause I know several of you all had asked that question as well.
I wrote, Mitch, I wrote down three questions when you, when you first got started, and your slides basically answered two of them, and the first one was how far from seventy-seven onto the site we were talking about, because one of the things that people have called and said, are these trucks gonna be tearing up our roads? Basically, from this drawing and this animation, that's not that far from seventy-seven to get to the site, and it's not going past the site to go anywhere else in our city, anywhere else in our county. From the site back to seventy-seven, you said the max diff- distance was what, two thousand feet?
Yeah, two thousand five hundred and eighty.
So, you know, I'm glad you, you, you brought this slide, and the next question was about the wages. You know, we've had people call me up and say, are we only getting low-paying wage jobs in our community? I don't think the average starting salary at the city of Rock Hill, or even the average starting salary here at the county is what we're seeing on the screen, is for us an average. Of course, that's gonna be weighted because you got management positions coming in at a much higher rate than your warehouse workers or whatever else they're gonna be doing, uh, truck switchers and no, those kind of things. So, you know, some of the things that's been thrown out publicly and through emails and phone calls, I think the slide presentation kinda answers that directly from, I should say the horse's mouth, so to speak, and not just my words, because I've seen this information, and you know, when we reiterate what we know, you know, does the public really wanna believe what we're saying? They really don't, because they're gonna believe what they first heard, what they first feel anyway. So I'm glad you're putting this pretty much on paper, on screen, in public, being upfront. And the next question that I wrote, which was the third and final question, was can you kinda educate the public who's watching, whether online or even sitting here, our different tax structures from North Carolina versus South Carolina as to why we're having to, while we always look to do some kinda incentive to level the playing field? Because when I tell people that in public, or on the phone, or in email, they have no idea what our tax structure is, what North Carolina is, and why we're having to offer some kinda incentive to at least be competitive with North Carolina.
Oh, that's a great point. Appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, when there was tax reform, I guess it was in two thousand and six, it, it really put us at a competitive disadvantage, especially as it relates to North Carolina and being so close and competitive with Charlotte, Mecklenburg, Gaston, beyond. And so, majority of the tax burden is going to fall on commercial, uh, industrial, and small business included, where you see a higher assessment rate on those businesses than what you see on residential. Whereas the very, uh, beneficial thing to live in South Carolina, to do business here, sometimes we have projects of a scale like this or others, we have to consider incentives or we essentially are gonna be left out at the deal at the last of it. Um, this is the way it works. And so, in this case here, the assessment rate for this project would be at six percent, um, with it being a two hundred and forty million dollar project, it would carry a significant amount of tax revenue, but this would be a performance-based deal, meaning Costco doesn't perform and do what they say that they're gonna do in terms of investment, in terms of job creation. Essentially, what you see have happened is that callbacks would be instituted, and, and we would not have to worry about any type of relief of tax burden on that side, um, and that would be for any deal that we do.
And I know people remember numbers more than they remember rhetoric, so what's North Carolina's tax rate versus South Carolina's tax rate, starting out, before we offer any incentive, before they offer any incentives, what, what are we looking at starting out?
I, I can tell you what we're up against. Um, you've got a very competitive county that probably is more on that four percent range of assessment ratio, where they will abate taxes up to a hundred percent for a period of anywhere from five to twenty years. I, I've worked in North Carolina, I've been in Lincoln County, which is a competitor of York County, and I can tell you exactly what they do.
Yeah, the kind, I mean, the difference between Mecklenburg County and York County in Texas is it's a, it is a challenge.
Ten and a half versus seven, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a big challenge, you know, and that's why we have to do these incentives. I just, I, you know, Bump brought up a good thing, again, in regards to the wages, you know, and that's not even, the other piece of this is the employee benefits. You know, when you look at this, you got medical, dental, vision, pharmacy coverage, life insurance, disability, 401K, couple of ma- you know, company matching and Andrew, annual contribution. You know, and the percents they pay for it, they have incredible benefits that they offer their employees, absolutely amazing. So, you know, uh, we've talked about this a lot, and again, this is, I'm glad we're having this discussion, I think it's critical to, you know.
Go back to wages just for one second. It seems like, and I've got so many notes, I'm not even gonna flip back and try to find this, but, um, I was thinking that you run very lean, your upper management, there aren't that many members in upper, upper management out of the one twenty-five, is that correct? I'm, I'm thinking less than ten?
The managerial, I have it nine, clerical, three, operators at ninety-five, laborers are eighteen.
Okay, all right. The average wage is fifty-nine thousand dollars?
You're looking at the twenty-six sixty-six. Uh, the managerial, the higher end at forty-eight oh eight, clerical's a little less at thirty-nine eighty, majority are gonna come in about twenty-six fifty, around.
Yeah, and then there, maybe if, if they're gonna speak, they could speak to their incentives, so what they give after six months of employment, the bonuses they give, ninety-two percent towards benefits, which is higher than what we, we provide here for York County employees.
I think if, if you do have specific questions tied to their offerings, they're here, they would speak better than I could on that.
Mitch, what, I love the, well, either the one twenty-five or the one sixty-five. How many of these are actually people hired from here?
I can't give you an exact estimate. It probably depends on who applies and who they want to hire.
No, I'm saying, what are they bringing with them versus what will be hired here?
I'm gonna look to him if that's okay.
Seth Katz, Costco Wholesale. I can't give you an exact answer because it varies. We do offer positions within the company to people who would wanna move here, but typically our experience is it'd be a, a, a small percentage of the overall workforce. Most of the people will come from the local community, but I can't give you any exact figures.
Seth, I think the, the question I, I would like to know from Costco is of the thousand cars and trucks, two thousand, if you do truck trips, a hundred and sixty-five of those are the jobs that we're talking about, right?
Of the two hundred and something trips?
The thousand, the thousand. There's a thou- first, first phase is a thousand cars and trucks, add 'em together. Guess I'm just trying to figure out, if it's a hundred and sixty-five new jobs, where are the other nine, eight hundred cars and trucks coming from for phase one?
So, the trucks are two pieces to it. One is what we call receiving trucks, those are trucks that come from the port or from manufacturers to our warehouse. We then receive those goods, sort them, and ship them to our individual stores. We call them membership warehouse clubs, and so that's, accounts for the truck trips. The cars, the largest portion of it is employees, and those employee numbers are for full-time employees. We also have some part-time employees that aren't included in the one twenty-five and one sixty-five. And then, as part of our building, we have about twenty thousand square feet of office, so there are FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, vendors who come to do different services, repair trucks, and things like that, so all those numbers are aggregated into the car number, and then the trucks, like I said, are the receiving.
I asked that very question, and I wanted to understand that as well. My understanding, it accounts for typical car traffic at other depots that they service, but it also accounts for if employees leave out for lunch and come back, so they can count as an additional trip as part of that.
But that's trucks and cars?
I, I understand, I'm talking on the car side, I'm sorry. Um, I was curious on the car side of why that number at two forty-four, when they I was curious on the car side of why that number at 244, when they had 165 employees? And essentially, what that counts into is single-unit deliveries. You'd have USPS there delivering mail, too, as well. That would account to it, UPS. Landscape maintenance crews, any visitors coming in to either see an employee or to visit at the office. People leaving to go out, get lunch, DoorDash. You factor all that in, they're trying to just give a very conservative estimate. That's what they were trying to do. And that was my understanding as I talked with you, specific as it relates to traffic. And they were doing that as a comparison with other depots that they have as well. Does that make sense?
We can move on.
Since we're talking-
I'm just trying to get clear.
I think we can move on.
Okay.
Since we're talking about traffic and you guys are standing up and this particular slide is up, speak to the work you have done, not only with Costco coming in and ultimately being built out to 950,000 square feet, but the parcel in front of y'all that you do not own, the 283 acres in the front that has these buildings on it. Now, this is a mock, but talk about the work you put into building the roundabout to meet this capacity and future capacity on Porter Road, please. And by the way, Porter Road is a state road, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And the internal road would be our City of Rock Hill Road?
Correct, yeah. Justin Manson, I'm with Kittlesen, a consultant to Costco. So I think there's a slide in here that's coming up very shortly that'll address some of the things on the roundabout. But yes, to your point, the traffic impact analysis that was completed factors in all of those additional parcels in addition to Costco. And so the off-site improvements, including the roundabout, are accounting for the trip generation that's needed for all of that development plus background growth through 2036. And it still provides additional spare capacity to more than double the volumes beyond that 2036 horizon with all the build-out of Costco and the other development.
So in 2036, just elaborate a little further. In 2036, with full build-out of Costco and the properties in front that you all do not own or control, 283 acres, you still have 50% more capacity for growth for the roundabout that you've created. Is that correct?
It's, yeah, it's actually a bit more than that. So what's shown on the slide here is what's out there today along Porter Road is about 4,400 daily vehicles. So average daily vehicles, these are counts from SCDOT. With the build-out of the Costco site plus the other development parcels that are in front of it, talked about those volumes go up to about 13,600 daily vehicles north of Porter Road. To the south of it, we're 7,600, sorry, I was heading the way. So that accounts for that additional increment of development plus background growth that's happening over that 10-year period. It's just naturally occurring growth in the area. So that leaves additional, with this two-lane roundabout that operates with ample spare capacity, you can get up with, excuse me, doubling those additional volumes up to 22,700 daily vehicles south of Porter Road and still providing adequate capacity with that roundabout. So in essence, the off-site improvements are set up to handle all of this additional traffic at this intersection as well as at the interchange itself, plus providing spare capacity to accommodate future growth. So we're not creating any sort of bottleneck in the system. We want to make sure that that any improvements that are being made supports additional expansion and development initiatives that are coming through.
Sidebar on the trucks. This is a little incidental, but it was brought up. So the school district was interested in this. So when you look at the trucks that come onto your property, you all have a requirement. I believe what I read was you use the California EPA standards, which means that a truck has to be of a certain year. And believe it or not, that truck puts off less emissions than a lawnmower.
Yeah, but that, don't even go there with that stuff. I fool with that stuff every day.
Yeah, y'all do use the California EPA standards, which is the highest standards in the United States as it relates to trucks. And trucks have to be of a certain year to actually do business with Costco. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But that Calif, I tried to explain, but we ain't doing away with no trolling. We ain't going to do away with no plastic. And everything's made of it, even the windmills, when they say they try and have safe green energy. But that California, in fact, it has no impact. That's been proven. It was a money hike.
Just to continue on, we're here at the end of the presentation. Exile Truck Group, being able to the site, has sent a letter of support. Do know it's not included, but I did receive an email from the Port Authority also supporting the project as well. This gives a better perspective. This is probably the most clear plan that you can see where it looks at the improvements. Essentially, there in that pinkish-red color is where the roundabout would be. The purple is the interior roads where you would extend Interconnect and show access into the site. And the green would be a new substation being built to upgrade power for that area with the blue site being shaded for the site that Costco would operate on and on.
Mitch, can you speak to the importance of that substation so that we can bring in advanced manufacturing potentially and other high-quality industries in front of the Costco building on that 283 acres?
Yeah, it definitely is going to increase capacity out there. I don't want to misspeak, and I should have had this written down. I don't know exactly what that's going to bring up the power usage to and allowable, but it's going to make it more conducive for, you know, essentially more manufacturing operations. And that was the intent with Rock Hill with the upgrade, is to have adequate power that has additional sites built out to be able to make those more attractive manufacturing.
Yeah, I think my greatest concern, and I think other council members, too, is we're not crazy about attracting B or C, Class B or Class C warehouse and distribution facilities. But one way to avoid that is to have the power or your infrastructure out there so that you can supply power to the right types of industries that you're looking for. If this particular, if Costco didn't end up on this site, we may end up with warehouse and distribution, multiple buildings, warehouse and distribution on that site, since it's zoned for it. It was zoned for it when the county had it, and now it's zoned when it was annexed.
I think we're getting into argument. Do we need, it sounds like we really need to finish, we stuck two other items on the agenda, and I know-
I was just saying, the power's really important. So then the 283 acres, we can attract the right type of industry out there, hopefully.
Right. But is it a question about the presentation or are we?
Just a comment, because you mentioned the power source.
The last thing I'll mention and then I'll wrap up. I want to outline the cost. I know that what we are considering is an infrastructure credit agreement of $30 million. Total improvements, potentially to the site and off-site, whether it be roadwork, stormwater drainage, fire truck road, tension basin, potentially totals out just under $44 million. So I wanted to get perspective in terms of the ask that you all are considering in the true cost of the total infrastructure for the area.
Hey Mitch, can you also mention, I know there's, we are working on it, but there's a talk about putting in some paths and trails or something along those, like for the local people in that area to-
I think what we're trying to focus on and what my intent in all of this is, is try to get Rock Hill more engaged, have a bigger purpose for a corridor beyond one site. There's a lot of land through there that is going to be developed at some point. I think trying to be intentional, to have a plan together with Rock Hill is important. It's important to me. I know I've spoken with several of you all, too, about being more collaborative with the municipalities. And so that's one piece we're trying to work on, and Costco is willing to be part of that process and support, if that's something we can do.
Right. My point, I just want to make sure people understand Costco is looking to partner with us on that, you know, opportunity. So that's good.
None of the $44 million infrastructure has to do with any of that, right?
No, it does not.
And the request is for 30 million, and this is where the 44 is going?
That would be correct.
Okay.
But isn't it basically mostly all their infrastructure?
Yes, yes and no. I mean, you've got roadway improvements that, you know, more than just Costco, cars are going to be on with that roundabout. And cars will also have additional turn lane on Oak Pond. So I would say-
Well, the 18, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm getting tired. The 18.2 million, that's all on Costco's site?
That would be correct, but it would also serve as stormwater for the additional 293 acres that Strategic Capital owns as well.
That's another business that owns their land?
I agree, yeah. But I just, I want to make that point clear. That's all.
Okay. And then the off-site are the roads in stormwater and the sub, the electric substation, 2.37, that's the cities?
That would be correct.
And the property dedication for the electrical substation, that's City of Rock Hill?
That is correct.
Okay. And those two, the other two road project stuff are road needs that are going to be needed in order for that site to function properly?
Yeah, I think those road improvements would be something that would be needed as entirety of that site develops anyway.
You couldn't have that many trucks without those improvements, could you?
No, probably not, no. Well, you could try it. I wouldn't recommend it. I think as you look at the entirety development of that site, though, it at least allows for the right infrastructure to be in place and it's performance-based.
All right.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to amend the credit. Am I allowed to do that?
You can make an amendment proposal, and if you get a second, we can do-
All right. I would like to amend the motion that the credit, that's what it's called, yeah, the credit, be 17 million, which is a result of just the off-site improvements minus, or it's 70% of the off-site improvements minus the property dedication for the electrical substation.
So the amendment is to reduce the infrastructure fee credit from 30 million to 17 million?
Yes.
Do we have a second? I'll second for discussion.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. All right. Here's a, it's nothing about the property. I would do this or about the company. I would request this for anybody, and I believe in, you know, if you're a project, you pay for what you pay for. If you need it, then you pay for it. I do it every day for my job. Developers, projects come in, they have to do their stuff. But this off-site, so the onsite stuff, I would cut that out. Or I intend to cut that out. The off-site improvements, you know, there was a question about, could you get that many trucks through there? Yeah, you could probably finagle some things and do a whole lot less improvements. But, you know, if a bunch of smaller companies come in, the county is going to end up funding those improvements, just like we're funding intersection or interchange improvements on the interstate. So I don't mind paying for off-site, you know, roadway improvements, paying part of it and still leaving them with a portion that they would need to do to do their improvements. And this, you know, paying them to give us their property or give Rock Hill the electrical station property, I just, I can't stomach that. So that's how I came up with this thing. I did the ratio of 44 million to $30 million credit, and then I just used the off-site improvements and used that percentage. So I just don't believe in paying for or crediting back their onsite improvements. Does that make any sense, or was it rambling?
No, I think I understand it. I'm trying to wait. I was interested to hear where the number came from. I do not support giving infrastructure credits in this case because I think the amount of traffic that's just going to be generated that we're, I mean, with the county right now, we're already looking at doing, yeah, it's not a county road, but the county's up here paying SIB money and SIB matches to do interchanges right now that have far less of an impact than this is going to be if you look at what's anticipated. And so I still think that, you know, a business that's entitled to come here, we welcome them. I will say Costco has been very professional and upfront and direct with their, what they've presented. This is just something that's gut-wrenching to me. To me, I think we should aim high for our whole county. And I've just spent a lot of time at State Commerce talking about why and helping the City of Rock Hill with the exit, the Palmetto exit, and this is not something they want at that exit. I don't think if they don't, if they don't want that exit or aren't willing to invest in it, then I think that we need to look and aim higher for, and I don't mean that in any disrespect to the company. I mean that in terms of the job generation and the impact it'll have to our infrastructure. So at the same time, I very much appreciate the thought behind the idea of, I mean, I think the main question is how do you justify giving an infrastructure credit of this size? And we've never done that for any warehouse and distribution facility at all. We've tried to work towards reducing that and look for higher manufacturing jobs, where the bulk of the jobs and the bulk of the traffic is going to be generated by our own constituents. We've already got congestion. We've got issues with that. To me, it's sticking your head in the sand just to think that this isn't going to deteriorate. I will support the amendment. We do have second reading, and here's another, I guess I'll go ahead and get a lot of this off my chest. It's frustrating to me. I requested that second reading coincide with public hearing, and that request was not allowed. I think transparency should dictate that. I think that the public should be able to hear this together, and it didn't coincide with that, and how the information has gotten out and what is there, that's concerning to me. And I think that it would have been much better, and I wish that we've done this in other instances where there were some concerns and where it was going to have such a huge impact, that the public hearing was done at second reading versus third. Because my concern is that there are folks that are asking me for information, and public hearing is December 1st. That's what it's been published for at the next meeting. And I felt constrained from giving them things because of trying to adhere to that. And, you know, I see some looks back there, but I'll put my hand on a Bible, take a polygraph test. I did not speak to any reporters or provide that information. I provided the information after we were told that we could provide the information from Costco. So I'm very sensitive to that, and I'll say that up here for the record. So let me backtrack and say, here's the amendment.
Hold on, we have a first and a second, and then the amendment to my motion. So really, we either, I need to withdraw the motion-
No, we're debating the amendment. We're debating the amendment.
Okay.
All right, so I would support the amendment because I do think that, that, I think that we need to expect that our businesses, we just sat here and spent time after time, how many meetings have we talked about impact fees? Where we're now putting the full fee on the residential homeowners that are coming out here? And here we have a business that clearly has the ability to fund that, and it's for onsite improvements, and I think I can understand the justification for that. So I will support the amendment. Mr. Roddy?
We just went through a thing with the public criticizing us for pulling a number out the air as to why we would sell on this fee or that fee, and the study says this. I look at this the same as I look at a fee in lieu of tax structure. It's just going now, instead of coming off the property taxes, is going to site improvements that we know other sites that's going to be developed around it is going to benefit from. I have no reservations about the full ask. My reservation comes in as to how we divvy up what comes from the county, what comes from the school district, what comes from the City of Rock Hill. Our skin in the game can be minimized if we structure the percentages different. I'm not in favor of cutting what they're asking for. I'm in favor of maneuvering where the bulk of the money is coming from, because we have three entities. Regardless of what we're going to give them for site improvement, infrastructure credits, three people are paying into this. It's not just, this money's not coming squarely from the county. So instead of saying, let's look at 17 million, let's look at where the money's going to come from. What's our percentage? What's our percentage? What's the school district's percentage? What's Rock Hill's percentage? Let's just don't jump out and throw seventeen out there. When we can massage the numbers and the percentages, still get there in less than our burden, less than the school district's burden. And maybe put more squarely on the shoulders of the City of Rock Hill, because clearly, they're standing to get a lot more benefit than we are. They have a lot more ways to recoup what they're given than we can. I'd rather have those conversations. And I've been in conversation with staff as to how do we structure this? I didn't know this was coming up tonight. I was kind of looking forward to a public hearing, but now, with this information being public, I think the public has more information they can digest and have legitimate questions, if they still have questions. Because a lot has been exposed tonight, from traffic, traffic patterns to, uh, wages. I think this sets up, even though it's a little unconventional to have third reading as a public hearing, but in this case, I can, I can bend to see how this could be a positive for people who have questions. Because a lot of questions got answered. It was made a lot clearer from the horse's mouth versus coming from council members who may be in favor of it, or coming from council members who weren't in favor of it. There's no slant with the information on the screen. It's clear-cut, it's concise, it speaks to what the intentions are, it speaks to what the costs are. Now, our toughest decision is, how do we lessen the county, how do we lessen the county's burden? How do we lessen the school district's burden? Because we just went through a thing where trying to get more money to our schools. I'm all in favor of finding a way to lessen the school districts give, lessen our give. Because we all know the real beneficiary, even though we're all giving up, who still stands to gain in the long run? We don't sell water, we don't sell sewer, we don't sell electric. That's where the benefit's going to come from with a development like this and everybody else developing around it. So, staff already has some numbers that we've talked about. We need to get those numbers out to council to see what they look like if we massage the percentages. If we shift some of the burden more to those who can recoup some of their give. And I think we all know where that's, where we're headed with that. So let's get to that conversation. I'm not going to support just doing seventeen, because I think there's a better pathway to achieve landing this company here, lessening our burden, providing jobs for our community, and growing our tax base. That's one of our number-one jobs here. It's not whether we solely one hundred percent want warehouse and distribution. Warehouse and distribution is knocking at the door right now. Either we're going to answer it, or let them go somewhere else. But I think there's a pathway, if we're concerned with the money. We can work the money out, but the traffic is still going to be, what traffic's going to be. We can't tell them, come here and cut your trucks in half, because those trucks means profit. Those trucks mean business, those trucks mean jobs. And if we say we want the business, but we don't want the trucks, we want the grocery on the shelves, we want the products on the shelves, but we're not at the port. Everything's moving by trucks, up and down seventy-seven. And they're not going into our community, as I've taken plenty of calls about trucks on the road. Well, shortest distance is a straight line, and six hundred, seven hundred feet is not that far. Who's going to take care of roads? That's one of the questions I fielded. That's not a big road to take care of. Uh, I don't like the seventeen million cap. I think I can, staff has the, staff has the blueprint to where we can get there. But we can't listen to, we can't lessen the trucks. But we can lessen our lift on landing this company by massaging the percentages of where the money comes from.
Yeah.
Are you saying you're making a motion on that, or no?
No, I mean, we're going to turn this, we're going to vote this one down, and then we can, I can go.
Yeah, I, you know, a couple of things, and, 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 I know you bump, you referred to it earlier, but, you know, the impact overall from how we have to be competitive with the market that we live in, we have to be competitive with the market we live in, and we have to be able to, you know, whether it's fee in lieu of payment or, or what we're offering here. And again, I think that the structure and what we're supplying, it, there's an outer good for it, you know? And I know, oh, you, you know, when you showed us that video, the video, and you showed the, the buildings, again, none of those were your buildings, but they're, all those new other companies that move in there are going to benefit from the work that's being done here. And that's a big deal, that's a big deal, you know? So you're feel, you're really building a field of dreams for other companies to come. And, you know, and you cover the roads, you got the power, you're already done, you got the roundabout. It's, again, it's a field of dreams, so there's, there's, to me, I mean, what's being asked, I'm very comfortable with it. I think it's what we have to do, and I think there's a lot of value to what you're offering, so.
Okay, so, um, one thing that, when you're talking about the other companies, uh, you're not considering, I know, nothing is definite, but, uh, you will have more employment from all those other companies. So it's not just Costco, it would be, how many buildings was that?
Yeah.
Six, or so buildings. So each one of those companies are going to employ people. But, um, we have to give incentives. That is just a given. I mean, if you don't want to give incentives, you need to go to Columbia and have a talk with them, because it's going to happen. And what, the way I feel is, um, you, if you turn this down, you do not know what could come. I say, this is, this company is a good company. I think they're honest. I think that the people that go to work for them would be happy working with this company. The incentives are fantastic. And, uh, from what we're dealing with, with other companies in this county, it's, um, it would be a godsend for this part of the, the county, and I stand on that. And I like Bump's proposal.
Any other discussion?
I'll just say, I, I can't support the amended proposal tonight either. Um, I feel the same way as the comments that have been shared already.
All right, so only amendment, all is in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so who is the, all right, now we're back to the main motion.
Make a motion to, uh, accept the original motion.
That is, that's the motion we're under. Is there any other amendment? Mr. Roddy?
I, I'll offer an amendment, and it's based on the percentages of where the thirty million would come from. Solely on the percentages, I think. I think Kevin, Kevin and I've kind of discussed it to a, to a certain degree, but it goes similar to this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's a hundred percent from the City of Rock Hill of their taxes due to them. Thirty-five point nine percent from, um, Rock Hill School District, and thirty-five percent from the county, to make up thirty million.
I, I don't have any of those percentages in front of me. What I would encourage you to do, Josh and I had a phone call with Costco a few weeks back, I believe, and some of these things were discussed, particularly that. And there's a lot of things, um, regarding those allocations that are already in place. And what I'd encourage between second, third reading, to get with Costco and to go through that, and to make sure you understand the implications of, of that motion, because I think that motion might have some implications that we're not aware of all the details in that.
Okay.
And that was something that we learned, I guess, maybe three, four weeks ago in a phone call, and I, I don't think that information's been disseminated to you.
Okay.
Additionally, this, we're, we're actually putting this in a multi-county industrial park as well, right? Which gives us the discretion to work with the school district that picks up roughly sixty-two percent of the taxes. Rock Hill picks up roughly twenty-four, and we get roughly fourteen percent of what's collected. This allows us to sit at the table with them to decide how we're going to divvy that money up, right?
That does, but I think everybody's aware of that, and I think some entities have already taken steps with Costco regarding that. And that's why I would encourage everybody before those motions are made to make sure you visit with Costco and understand the ramifications of that, because there might be some unforeseen consequences.
Right.
Well, let's get those ramifications out to us, so we know what we're dealing with.
Okay.
Did you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, let's, let's withdraw it.
Okay, that motion's withdrawn. So we're back to the main motion. Again, this motion is to approve the full thirty million dollar infrastructure credit for, uh, Costco, uh, in connection with this agreement. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No? Uh, motion passes four to three. All right.
Yeah.
All right. We are now at new business. Item number one, council to provide first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and assumption agreement, the assignment by and between certain parties, including York County, South Carolina, and a company identified for the time being as Project Forge, the company approving the transfer and assignment to the company of certain rights, interests, and obligations under the existing fee in lieu of tax agreement. Fee agreement B, a second amendment to the fee agreement, and C, a first amendment to an additional existing fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between the county and the company. All in connection with the assignment and the establishment and or expansion of certain facilities by the company and the county, and providing for other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, can, uh, somebody explain exactly what is taking place, uh, in a simple manner, so that, uh, the public can be aware of it, and, uh...
Yes, we, we can do that, and, and just for those, you know, who are watching, these are, these are things that we do talk about in executive session in advance of this, and we have talked about this, but I'll let our economic development director, uh, give you all a few more details.
Councilmember Litten, thank you. I, I think it's one of those that, a lot of language, and probably deserves a better understanding.
We have a lot of those, actually.
I know. You do a great job, though. I will give you a lot of credit on, on how you worked through that and explained it. Essentially, we have a company that had an existing fee on a property off Williams Industrial Boulevard. They vacated that property in, I want to say, maybe two or three years ago. It was a product code, where the company was, basically, their business was predicated on office furniture equipment. Uh, obviously, they saw, uh, a big decline in the office market, decided to close their operations, move everything back to Canada. So, as we've had this fee on this building, we have an existing company that would love to purchase the building and assume the fee that sits there today. And so, step one in that with purchase would be the assignment and assumption, meaning that they would assume the fee as it is. Uh, the amendment to that, though, uh, the company that was there, the company was called DIRTT, the IRTT. They had a job requirement, essentially, to bring a total employment of a hundred and thirty-five to that site, which they never met. The company that is looking to expand is an existing county, a, a company in York County. They would create a total of forty-two new jobs, paying an average wage of thirty-one fifty. They would require an amendment to that fee, that job number. But they also would be adding in additional investments, um, to the tune of about, I think it's eighteen million in machinery and equipment, and then to purchase the property, twenty-two million, so you see an increase, pretty significant increase, in the investment side compared to where it was. So you would have an amendment to increase their total investment. All that being said, that's what's encompassed within that title, and that's really the short way I can describe it.
And you can't rela, even though they have an existing, uh, FLO with us, you can't release the two names of, or the name of the company?
In this case, um, they've asked it to remain confidential. Um, I have to respect that, and, but I definitely understand where you're coming from. I, I would love nothing more than the case of being as transparent as I can. But I can also say this is a very competitive industry on my side, and I really have to take into account potentially those concerns on there, and I'm sorry for that.
Okay. This is neat what they do, though.
I, I think this instance probably warrants a really good opportunity for us moving forward. I think, um, you all having the ability to meet with this company, hear directly from them about their growth plans, you know, that's something that we offered up. And I think it's a good way to at least give you all perspective as to who they are, what they'll be doing, and the impact they could have. And I can make a promise to move forward on those, especially existing companies that are here. We want to make that a priority.
Well, I appreciate, you know, what they do, and since I happen to know what it is, but, uh, I think the public may be happy to know about it, too, and know their growth and all of that good stuff, and know why we're doing the things that we're doing, and that we're not doing this secretly.
I agree, and I, I think echoing, how, how do we as a community, how do we as a county share the information in more details earlier on and let the community know more about it? I think that's going to be critically important.
Yeah.
This, this particular situation, you ha, you can't ask for a, a better situation where you have a small business that has really picked them out from, themselves up from a bootstraps, have employed lots of people, and given lots of people in our community a chance to not, to have really high-paying jobs that, um, continue to grow and take over a building that had gone vacant and continue to do high-performance manufacturing jobs. That's, that's, um, that's important, so I will support this. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move now to item number two, council to consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source credit agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, Project Dinger, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will receive certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve, as written, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sure, we'd like for this one to be publicly announced, too.
Yeah.
And, and just since Mitch is walking, I do want to, to share, there's long-term implications for company names coming out earlier in the process than typical. It's best practice for it to be third reading. Uh, that's what we've done here. I would discourage doing it earlier, because all of a sudden, we will have no companies wanting to come to York County. So we want to make sure, you, you're, you're clear on management's perspective. We would not recommend sharing these names earlier, especially if the company has asked us not to.
I don't thi, I don't hear, I don't hear anyone up here necessarily saying the name needs to be released. I think the details and the facts of who it is are, are what needs to be released, and released in a form where i- i- it's sufficient enough that you can share the details of those things. I mean, like even before the other ones, even if we were told we couldn't even share any information by blacking out the name, that's when it becomes an issue of how do you address that, when people want to know afterwards, so.
I heard, I heard both, so I heard the name, and I also heard the details, so, but, but details, we can share details. I think, I think the opportunity was given to tour the last place, too, and Mitch has done a lot of work to try to give you all access to these companies that are coming here, too, and get you, get you all, all the questions answered for you in advance. So, I just don't want it to be, to seem from the public that we're not doing our job, giving you all the information you need.
No, and I like, I like this idea of you coming now and presenting and providing information and answering those questions, e- even at first reading. I think that's, that's good.
I, I'm happy to oblige to that, and I, I think is, if that helps you all, when you have conversations with the constituents, I'm happy to do that. I would agree with, um, the county manager that these projects are very sensitive. This is probably one of those rare cases where timing didn't quite work for me to get you documents, but this project's already been discussed with you all. It's Tread Athletics. I've talked to the, um, the owner of the business, completely okay with me sharing that information today. He's excited to be part of Fort Mill in York County. And I, I think it's one of those businesses that will usher us into really a, a new age of business. They do some amazing work in sports science with really working with professional athletes, and what that's going to mean in terms of tourism coming into York County, as well as some high-quality jobs. So I'm really excited about that.
Yeah.
Thank you for all, for your consideration of the project.
Absolutely.
I don't, this certainly is not going to, not going to bring a lot of trucks, and a lot's going to fit well in with the communities there.
I think it will bring a lot of people with a lot of income that will not only utilize the site, but also frequent restaurants, hotels, things that, you know, we will see a benefit, probably frequent small businesses as well. They're a really great company.
We're excited to have them in Fort Mill.
Yeah, I, I.
Trust me.
I second that.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing now, motion carries. Committee and other reports, Finance and Operations Committee meeting, November seventeenth, Monday, November seventeenth.
Yep.
At five-thirty. Mr. Audit?
Yeah, so we had our meeting tonight, uh, council member Atkins and Roddy were there, and we passed a few different items. So, the first thing we did is we filled some committee seats. The first one was the Board of Disability and Needs for a vacant-at-large seat. James Smith was approved. Next, we filled an application for services for the Building Board of Appeals. A vacant seat, uh, for Carly Hayden. Vacant seat for Carly Hayden. Next, we filled a vacant seat for Oakdale Fire Tax District. We approved Jack Allen for a first term on that. Also, we, let's see, approved a few members here for the Cultural and Heritage Commission, and the District Three seat for Marina Duncan, the District Seven seat for James Fitzpatrick, and then for a vacant Shell seat for Edward Stewart. And then next, we have the Catawba Mental Health Board. We approved John Pennell for a first term. And also, in, for a second term, we approved Janelle Stevenson, and also John Gregory also to that committee. Lastly, we approved allocations of funds for District Three to Greater Things Ministry for the amount of two thousand dollars. The next one, we approved for District Three of the Men's Club of York in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. District Four, the Eden Community Development Corporation for the amount of one thousand dollars. Also approved in District Six, Men on a Mission for the amount of two thousand. And lastly, District Seven, Great Things Ministry in the amount of two thousand dollars. We also did get a financial update with more details to come on our next financial meeting. So, that is it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
My understanding is the first individual who signed up under Citizen Concerns is rescheduled. We do have a citizen who has waited until ten-thirty to speak. Cindy Helms to address counsel regarding Project Sample.
Hello. I know it's been a long night, so I'll make it brief. My name is Cindy Helms. My address is twenty-two seventy-six Williford Road in Rock Hill. I am here to speak about a few concerns I have regarding the Costco Distribution Center and that they are asking for thirty million in an infrastructure credit. My first concern is about the secrecy around this. After reading about this project in the Herald, I emailed the county manager and requested a copy of the Costco proposal. He sent me to Karen Brogdon, and I requested the same information from her. My request was denied. As a result of that denial, I immediately asked her to place me on the agenda tonight. I do not understand. I do not understand why a citizen of York County would be denied any information about something that would directly affect them and their community. As my husband put it, there should be absolutely nothing that a government representative would look at or vote on that the citizens should not be allowed to see except private personnel or employee matters. My family and I travel on these roads. My grandson goes to school on this exact same road. This will affect my community. I do want to say that I appreciate the fact that Councilman Litten, in that same Herald article, said if the public doesn't know what they're weighing in on, then they can't weigh in, and he was right. If this is good for York County, why is there secrecy? I met with two representatives of Costco in this building tonight, and they want the information public. My second concern, the money. It is stated in tonight's agenda that Costco is requesting a thirty million dollar infrastructure credit agreement to support off-site public infrastructure, but that is not correct. According to their own proposal, eighteen million would be used for Costco's on-site infrastructure, what they would do for their own building. Then, another eight million or more than eight million would be used on, for inside, infrastructure inside the industrial park. Any other developer would be required to install their own stormwater drainage and their own roads. In fact, in a September second, two thousand and twenty-two, Rock Hill Planning Commission notes, it states that the developer will do this work. So, what changed? Then, to top it off, over three million dollars worth of property and infrastructure will be donated to the city of Rock Hill. York County is not getting forty-four million in public infrastructure. It is only getting fourteen million. Fourteen million that would go to build a roundabout on Porter Road and a turn lane on Oak Pond Road. My third concern, traffic. According to Costco's proposal, approximately twenty-five hundred truck trips will occur daily at the end of Phase Two. In our meeting tonight with Costco, Costco says they plan to be here long-term. They're not a company that's going to lease property, or they're going to buy and sell. They plan on staying here, so Phase Two will happen. That is one to two trucks every minute. Again, that is one to two trucks every single minute on those roads, even if it's only six hundred feet. The diagram, the animated thing that they were showing, coming off of, going northbound on Seventy-seven and coming off of Porter Road, that truck has to, in that short distance to get to the roundabout, it has to come off and cross lanes while other trucks are going other directions and coming off ramps coming southbound, and those trucks trying to get in. It's, it's a mess I'm concerned about. What is going to be done about the bridge, about the ramps with all that traffic? On exit twenty-one, where twenty-one is, that lane road used to back up when it had one lane. Traffic would back up all the way down Seventy-seven. This is more trucks and traffic than that's ever thought about. I mean, twenty-five hundred trucks is more, it's greater than any business in York County. I just, I'm concerned. Will Costco have a plan to direct their trucks to stay off of local roads? What will happen when a wreck happens on Seventy-seven? Where will all those trucks go to get in and out if there's, if there's a wreck on Seventy-seven? And that happens all the time. We see that now. Trucks being rerouted. There's a school on that road. This is simply not a business deal. This is not simply a business deal. There's a lot to consider, and people have to get all of the facts, all of the facts, not miss facts, just like on the county's own agenda tonight. This is, it's not thirty million dollar infrastructure credit for public roads and public infrastructure. This is private infrastructure. That is their infrastructure, and that is the infrastructure to an industrial park that the county does not own. That does not make that public. The public gets a roundabout and a turn lane. What happens when this deal is done? Who's maintaining those roads? Who's taking care of that? Who's taking care of ramps, getting trucks out of ways? Who's making sure my grandson is safe when he goes to and from school on that same road? I ask you to vote no. I ask you to vote no to giving thirty million dollar infrastructure credit agreement. They have the right, I'm going to say that last thing. Costco has the right to be there. They have the right to buy the land. It is zoned for what they want. They have the right. But that doesn't mean that they have the right to thirty million dollar infrastructure credit. I ask you to vote no to that part. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any council member, new knowledge, in the comments before executive session? Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yep.
Holy moly. I'm scared I'm on Jinxit.
All right. Yeah, we have a few things here. Received legal advice, legal matter litigation update, receipt of legal advice, contractual matter EMS contract, receipt of legal advice, impact fees.
We got a second?
Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I said impact fee again, and we all did that. I didn't know if that mattered.
Okay, we'll just forget that one. I think we all said a. We're going.
Yeah, we said it. Yeah, we said it.